For those of you joining us, we're just gonna wait a minute to make sure that staff's ready to go and we get everything recorded when it needs to. So hang with us just a minute, we'll get started.
Chris, this is Joe. Can I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
Are you gonna be giving me control of the presentation again like last time?
Yes, sir.
Awesome. Thank you very much for confirming.
Good evening, everyone.
Hello. Good evening.
Beautiful weather.
Yes, and today was a 10. And then this weekend it drops 30 degrees. I don't know what happened.
I know. It's like a spotlight zone out there as far as that.
Yeah. Well, Chris and staff, let me know whenever you guys are ready and we can kick it off.
I show 6 o'clock and we have everything ready. You're good.
All right. Well, with that, I'm filling in his chair tonight. My name's Lisa Holland. But good evening. Welcome to our Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for April 16th, 2020. We are bringing this to you via Zoom and we're just gonna take a couple of seconds to explain how it's gonna work first. So on your screen, you should see all the commissioners who are present for the evening's meeting. And we also have on the call staff as well as representative from a city attorney and our city clerk offices. And we also have staff from our planning department on the call as well. Everybody else that's on the line are on Zoom as attendees and you can observe the meeting. And we can, we know that you're there, but your ability to talk and scene will be muted. During the public testimony portion of the hearing, you will be unmuted and able to comment. If you previously sent in a presentation for the meeting, it will be displayed on the screen. And the clerk will help you run that presentation. The clerk will also help assist with bringing up slides from another presentation if you need it. So just please ask. If you just wanna tune in to watch the meeting, we encourage you to watch the live stream on the city's YouTube channel, which can be accessed at meridiancity.org/live. And when public testimony is opened, the clerk will call the names of those who signed up to testify on the website. You'll be unmuted and I will call on you individually to speak. Please state your name and address for the record when it comes time and you'll have three minutes to address the commission. After that time, we may open it up for questions for clarification. And then once done, you'll be muted and no longer have the ability to speak. Once all of those of you who have signed up in advance are called, I'll invite any others who wish to testify. And if you wanna speak on a topic, you are welcome to press the raise hand button in the Zoom app. Or if you're listening through a cellphone or landline, you can press star nine and unmute yourself and then wait for your name to be called. If you're listening on multiple devices, like a computer and a phone, please make sure you mute those devices so we don't have feedback and everyone can hear you clearly. And note that we can't take questions until the public testimony portion. So if you have a question or a process question during the meeting, please feel free to email cityclerk@meridiancity.org and they can attempt to help you as quickly as possible. So hopefully that makes sense and thanks for joining with us, even though it's not the way we're used to doing things, but we're getting more used to it and getting better at it. So at this time, I would like to call to order the regularly scheduled meeting of the Planning, Meridian Planning and Zoning Commission for the hearing date of April, or sorry, did I say April 16th? Virginly, I did. I was reading off the script if you couldn't tell, sorry about that. For the date of June 4th is the date that we are today and we'll start with a roll call.
Thank you, Chairperson Holland. Sorry, I'm starting a little bit confused right now. I just got an email from Bill Cassinelli that says that he is trying to dial, but he's muted as an attendee. So I'm just trying to decipher which attendee he is. Do you want me to try to connect him before I call roll or would you prefer I call roll so you can move on?
No, we can wait for Bill to get tied in here. I can find you.
Go ahead, Chris.
I was gonna say, there was a phone caller in, but now there's nobody by phone. So if he's calling back in, I'll be watching for that. But there's not, currently not, there's nobody by phone at the moment.
I see him as one of the panelists.
That's Bill Parsons.
Oh, sorry.
Because he's trying to do audio only?
Yeah, he's calling in. I believe he is traveling from out of state right now. He said he'd try to call in if he could, which sounds like he's trying to do. But I'm not sure if it's working. I emailed him back to see if I could get in touch with him again.
I think we could take roll and if we manage to get him on the call, we can just state on the record when he joins us if you'd like. Or if he tries to call back in, we can still wait a minute here.
Okay. Thanks for your patience. Commissioner Seal?
Here.
Commissioner McCarville?
Here.
Commissioner Pittsir?
Here.
Commissioner Grove?
Here.
Commissioner Holland?
Here.
Absent so far are Commissioners Cassinelli and Commissioner Fitzgerald.
Thank you for that. So the first item we have on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Noting that there's just one item that is gonna be open for requests for continuance and that is public hearing for Teakwood Place H-2020-0006. They're requesting a continuance to July 16th, so we won't be opening for public testimony tonight on that application. But otherwise, the agenda sits and stands. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
Moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We will move on to the next item, which is the consent agenda, which is just the approval of minutes from the May 28th, 2020 Planning and Zoning special meeting. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. So at this time, we already kind of walked through a little bit of the public hearing process. So I'm not gonna go through that again, but just to summarize briefly, we're gonna start with a staff report on each item and then we're gonna allow the applicant to share for up to 15 minutes on their application and answer questions, give us their presentation. After they're finished, we'll open up the floor for public testimony. If you would like to testify tonight, you're welcome to message the city clerk's office so that they have you on that list or raise your hand when it comes to that time and we'll let you know when that is. And you'll have three minutes to address us and then we will allow the applicant to close before we deliberate. And if there's anyone representing an HOA and we have the ability to, I don't know that we'll have the situation, but if we do have someone here representing a larger group and wants to cede time for several people in the audience, we can give them a little bit longer to speak, but otherwise, I think we will move on and start with public hearing item for Teakwood Place H-2020-0006. And at this point, the applicant has requested a continuance to July 16th of 2020. And since this is their request, it would be up to them to pay for the renoticing requirements for that application. So just noting that. If you'd all like to hear from the applicant on why they'd like a continuance, we could certainly ask for that. But I think they just had a few more things to work through before they were ready to come to us. So if anyone wants to make a motion to grant that continuance, noting that the applicant would be responsible for any fees with renoticing, that would be great.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Seal.
Move to continue file number H-2020-0006 to the date of July 16th, 2020, per the applicant's request, who will be responsible for all renoticing.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. So next, we'll move on to public hearing item for Gracie Fighting Academy.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. I just wanted to note for the record that Commissioner Cassinelli joined the meeting at 6:06.
Great. Welcome, Commissioner Cassinelli. I think he's there. So we'll move on to item B, which is public hearing for Gracie Fighting Academy H-2020-0054. And we'll start with a staff report.
Thank you, Commissioner Holland. Members of the commission, can you guys hear me well? Okay, awesome. Always gotta check with this stuff. All right, let's start. So the first item actually being heard tonight is Gracie Fighting Academy. The request before you is for a conditional use permit for an indoor recreation facility located within an existing building in the Isle zoning district. The applicant is proposing to lease a tenant space within an existing building and operated jujitsu academy, which if you don't know, is a form of grappling martial arts. Staff was provided with their proposed summer schedule that shows the intended hours of operation for this business. According to this schedule, a vast majority of the business hours will be during the evening hours, Monday through Friday between 5:00 and 8:00 p.m. Well, really 5:00 and 9:00, their last class is 8:00. The schedule also shows some one-on-one training at noon each day as well. The applicant intends to have short Saturday morning hours as well, with the last hour, noon to 1:00, being reserved for more of the instruction training. Within this same building, there is another martial arts studio, the dojo. The dojo received conditional use permit approval and CZC approval in 2011 for this use and related improvements. The CUP approval did not restrict the operational hours beyond those listed within the specific use standards. This business has similar hours of operation on Monday through Thursday and is closed on Fridays. But also has one less class on Tuesday evenings. The dojo also has Saturday morning classes with one-hour classes reserved for each age group, juniors, kids, and adults, going from approximately 9:15 a.m. to noon. So similar hours to this application, but less. These types of uses, you know, indoor recreation facilities usually have staggered hours of operation that are offset from either nearby industrial or commercial uses, as is the case for this application. Staff does not foresee additional impacts by this tenant and proposed use other than additionally evening parking being used. The applicant has already received building permit approval for this suite after staff signed off on the certificate of occupancy and air in the recent months. This building does house other commercial users and one light industrial user and nature back company. The subject site and existing building provide 49 parking stalls. In addition, all nearby industry buildings appear to be of smaller scale and house multiple tenants aimed at low-impact use. There have been no reported issues with parking at this location. The two other known uses within this building appear to have normal operating hours during the standard work week and show that the proposed hours of operation of this application will rarely overlap. The two local streets that have butted the site, East Piper Court and South Atkins Way, are at least 35 feet wide, allowing for on-street parking on both sides. Staff has calculated approximately 360 linear feet of street frontage directly abutting the site. So not on both sides, just the ones abutting the site. And those could provide for approximately 15 additional on-street parking spaces. Therefore, staff believes the available on-street parking and existing 49 parking stalls is more than adequate parking for the proposed use and subject site. Due to the fact that the proposed use is within an existing building and no site or exterior building modifications are proposed, a certificate of zoning compliance will not be required and no additional site improvements are gonna be required. They were already covered in 2011 with the previous CUP and CZC for the existing indoor recreation facility for the dojo. So in short, staff does recommend approval of the proposed conditional use permit pursuant to the conditions in my staff report. And I will stand for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Any questions for staff?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Grove.
Joe, with the staff error, does that mean that they have been operating recently or have they not yet started operations?
Commissioner Grove, members of the commission, as far as I know, they have not been operating. I believe they were, honestly, don't know how they got down this path of actually applying for the CUP. I do not remember completely, but the coronavirus kinda stopped them from opening, opening. But they did do their TIA, they've already had approval on that, but from my understanding, they have not been operating. They've been waiting for this to go through. So they've been, they've been good on that front.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Hearing none. Do we have the applicant available to speak with us?
Madam Chair, he is in the meeting room now. I'm unmuting if it allows me. The applicant is in the room.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yes, I'm.
If you're there, we can hear you. Yeah, if you wouldn't mind just stating your name and address for the record, we'd love to hear from you.
Sorry. Yes, my name is Eia Follow. My address is 1287 North Stonehenge Way, Meridian, Idaho, 83642. The facility address is 149 South Atkins Way, Meridian, Idaho, 83642 as well. My main purpose for being here today is the request for the conditional use permit for an indoor recreation facility located within that existing building on 1.26 acres on that land on 149 South Atkins Way. My main purpose is, first off, I'm a business owner and a professional, a professor for jujitsu, which is a martial arts discipline. The main purpose of my business is just to provide a self-defense that does not involve striking along with fundamental exercises and body movement to keep all my students safe and healthy. I feel that I would fit well in this building and area because of the nature of my business and what all the other surrounding businesses are providing. For instance, there's a cry school in Suite 101 on the building that we're talking about, the 149 Atkins. Also a dance school in 195 Atkins and a CrossFit gym in 345 Atkins as well, all of which are providing personal training and fitness to the community. Our hours of operations, as said before, are predominantly from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m., a time in which most industrial as well as commercial businesses are closed. Therefore, the traffic produced by our customers basically will not take place mostly in the non-business hours and will keep the area from being overly congested. Customer parking should be of no concern as there is simple, there's ample onsite parking provided on the parcel of 149 Atkins. My students and I would also have no problem parking out on the street of South Atkins Way or East Piper Court, given the corner lot nature of the parcel and allow use of the city street to park on. Regarding the city of Meridian's code 11-4-3-2, I will be complying and won't cause any issues because of all my business activities will take place indoors. There's only one other business operating during the time at which I am operating on the same property. There would be more than enough room for everyone to park with there being two martial arts academies also on this facility, operating on this facility. It would bring an influx of respect and propriety to the area. Our main hours of operation are from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. yesterday before, Monday through Friday and Saturday from 9:00 to noon. The only time the facility would be used other than those hours would be for a private lesson. Said before at like noon or accommodated their timeframe, time schedule. Each private lesson will last for one hour and generally scheduled for a time of convenience. I would hope that each business would feel that we will, as a business owner, would provide a variety of services that would help the community as well as each other. A lot of the businesses in the area around add value to each other since they can be used to improve or help one another's clientele. Furthermore, bringing more business to each of the surrounding businesses causing growth and stability. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Any questions for the applicant? No questions. Thanks for taking a few minutes to be with us this afternoon or this evening and sharing with us kind of what you're looking to do there. Madam Clerk, do we, do we have anybody else sign in to testify?
Madam Chair, we do not.
All right. And I'm assuming, I'm not sure if you've got any other comments you'd like to make, Mr. Follow, but certainly if you do, you're welcome to make any closing comments you'd like before we deliberate.
No, ma'am. Thank you for listening.
All right. Thank you. With, with that, can I get a motion to close the public hearing for Gracie Fighting Academy H-2020-0054?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All I'll just say is, you know, it is an industrial area, but it's kind of a mixed-use flex industrial area. It's got a lot more commercial in it than it does industrial. So I don't see any concerns with where they wanna put their facility and, you know, there's an indoor soccer stadium close by. There's a lot of other health-related activities. It looks like a nice, nice shop. So in, in my mind, I don't see any big concerns with it, but certainly opening it up to all of you for discussion.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner McCarville.
I, yeah, I think this sounds like it's a good fit, especially with the other things that are already there. And I don't have any, I would support it.
Chair.
Commissioner Grove.
I'll echo both, both of you. Seems like a good fit for what is already there and would complement this, the surrounding area.
Commissioner Sealer, Pittsir.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Cassinelli.
Oh, good. You can hear me. I wasn't sure. Yeah, I'm, I'm on board, fully supported. Don't see any, any issues.
Commissioner Pittsir or Seal? Either one of you have a comment or a motion?
I'm not opposed to that and I would make motion if you would like. Or Commissioner Seal, would you like to go first?
I have, I just echo what everybody else has. So this seems to be a good fit, good area. Glad to see more of these things coming into the community. So Commissioner Pittsir wants to make the motion, I, I will move out of the way.
And just one reminder, this is a conditional use permit, so we are the deciding body. So when you make your motion, just note that we are giving them approval to move forward.
Thank you. Madam Chair, after considering all staff, applicant, and public testimony, I move the approved file H-2020-0054 as presented in the staff report for the hearing date of June 4th, 2020, without any modification.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Hearing none. We will move on to the public hearing for Landing South H-2020-0005. And we'll begin with staff report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. The next applications before you are a request for a rezone and a preliminary plat. This site consists of 2.27 acres of land. It's owned R4 and is located at 660 South Linder Road. A Jason land use and zoning, single-family residential properties surround this site, zoned R8 and R4. This property was annexed in 1994 without the requirement of a development agreement. The comprehensive plan future land use map designation is medium-density residential, which calls for three to eight dwelling units per acre. A rezone of 2.43 acres of land is requested from the R4 to the R8 zoning district for the development of 14 residential dwelling units consisting of a mix of single-family residential detached and two-family duplex dwellings at a gross density of 6.16 units per acre consistent with the medium-density residential future land use designation. A preliminary plat is proposed consisting of 10 building lots and three common lots on 2.27 acres of land in the proposed R8 district. The minimum lot size proposed is 4,004 square feet with an average lot size of 6,305 square feet. Duplexes are proposed adjacent to Linder Road with single-family residential detached homes on the eastern portion of the development. Access is proposed via the extension of an existing stub street, South Spoonbill Avenue from Joshua Street from the north boundary of the site, which ends in a cul-de-sac. Two common driveways are proposed off the cul-de-sac for access as shown on the plat. No access is proposed or approved by a Linder Road. There is an existing emergency-only access off-site to the north by a Linder Road. Off-street parking is provided in accord with UDC standards. Two on-street parking spaces as well as four spaces at the ends of common driveways for a total of six spaces are available for guest parking in addition to the parking pads provided on each lot. And those spaces are shown as the red dots there before you. Staff is concerned that there may not be adequate on-street parking for guests and area for trash receptacles on trash day. However, the UDC does not have standards for on-street parking. The Kennedy lateral runs along the north boundary of the site and has been piped. The pathways master plan depicts a 10-foot-wide multi-use pathway along the frontage of the side adjacent to Linder Road. However, because there is an existing sidewalk that is in good condition in this area, the Parks Department is not requiring it to be constructed at this time and is only requiring an easement for future construction of a pathway. A 25-foot-wide landscape street buffer is required along Linder Road. Because this site is below five acres in size, the qualified open space and site amenity standards in the UDC do not apply. An open space exhibit was submitted that depicts 0.37 of an acre of common open space consisting of the street buffer along Linder Road and the area along the northern boundary where the Kennedy lateral lies. No amenities are proposed. Broad iron fencing is proposed to be constructed at the back edge of the street buffer along Linder Road and along the Kennedy lateral easement. Concept building elevations were submitted for the homes proposed in the development. As shown, single-family detached homes are a single-story in height with stucco finish and stone veneer accents. Duplexes are two stories in height with a mix of vertical and horizontal siding. The duplex structures are required to comply with the design standards in the Architectural Standards Manual. Written testimony has been received from Chris and Candace Johnson. They are requesting Joshua Street is allowed to extend to the west and connect to Linder Road as a permanent access instead of emergency only. Or at the very least, that construction traffic is allowed to use this access for development of the subdivision and that a no outlet sign be installed at South Tiley Way where it intersects Waltman Drive to notify drivers the street dead ends to prevent unnecessary traffic on the street. Second, written testimony was received from Jeff Boland. He is requesting a direct access via Linder Road as well for this development, for access to this development. And on that note, staff did reach out to ACHD to see if an access via Linder Road would be allowed and they said it would not as it does not meet district policies. The site does not have sufficient frontage to meet spacing requirements from Gander Drive to the south and Pintail Drive to the north. With the proposed development factored in, traffic volumes on Gander Drive are anticipated to be well below what is allowed on a local street. Kenneth Scott Grapperton submitted written comments. He has concerns pertaining to the continued provision of irrigation water to his property, which currently runs through the north side of the proposed project and accessibility of the ditch for repairs and cleaning. Lastly, Josh Beach, the applicant's representative, submitted comments in response to the staff report. They are in agreement with the report except for conditions 3B and 3C. They request the modification to 3B to delete the first sentence and add, the applicant shall comply with standards listed in UDC 11, 3B, 10C, 5, and prior to city council should coordinate with the city arborist on mitigation. And she'll provide planning staff with an updated landscape plan showing caliper inches proposed to be removed and caliper inches replaced. The second portion there, the 50-inch caliper silver maple along Linder Road is required to be retained on the site and protected during construction unless required to be removed by ACHD as proposed to remain. And that exact wording is in your hearing outline. Staff is amenable to this change. And condition number 3C, they would like that condition deleted, which requires mitigation calculations to be included on the landscape plan and the calculations table based on the city arborist inspection in accord with UDC standards. A total of 67 caliper inches of trees is required for mitigation. And that, that relates to the aforementioned condition. They were, I didn't really speak to, I guess, what they were deleting. That condition required them to provide an additional 67 caliper inches of trees within common areas in accord with UDC standards for mitigation. So they wanted 3C deleted. Staff is not recommending deletion of this condition and recommends instead that the specific caliper inches to be mitigated is updated based on the updated mitigation plan to be provided by the applicant before the city council meeting. And again, that language is in your hearing outline. Staff is recommending a Staff is recommending approval with the conditions in the staff report. Staff will stand for any questions.
Thanks, Sonia. Any questions for staff? No questions from staff?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Grove.
Sorry, I was trying to find my notes. Sonia, question on the right-of-way. Is the right-of-way that is proposed, that includes planning for the expansion of Linder? And then does that also include the spacing for the, of a pathway?
Yes, the pathway, Commissioner Grove, Madam Chair, will be located within the street buffer along Linder Road.
When, when the road is expanded?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Hearing none. I believe Josh is here to represent the applicant. Do we have Josh online? There he is.
Should be. You see me there, maybe?
We do. Hello, sir. How are you?
I'm doing all right. How about yourself?
Doing good. If you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record, we'd love to hear from you.
You got it. Josh, excuse me, Josh Beach, representing JLJ or Jim Jewett. Business address is 2030 South Washington Avenue, Emmett, Idaho. So as Sonia mentioned, this is, is an application for a rezone and for a preliminary plat. It, it's fairly straightforward. We've, we've got, if I can figure out how to move to the next slide here.
Josh, you might have to accept control first. It says you're waiting. Now it shows you. You got it.
Hey, there we go. Perfect. Basically the same slides you just saw from Sonia, showing the lot count there. One thing I did want to mention initially is that the, the thought here was there are, there are duplexes that are located up against the Linder frontage and that street buffer there. And as was asked or referred to, there will be a sidewalk constructed on there when ACHD widens the road. And those, those eight units or those four lots there will have their front doors facing Linder Road to kind of break up that, that, that face and to make some, some visual interest there along Linder Road. Essentially, it's just one giant wall of fencing all the way to, all the way to Franklin there. So that was one of the thoughts. One of the other thoughts was that it will increase the likelihood of, you know, those residents utilizing some of the facilities there at the Paragon Elementary School and/or accessing some of the commercial businesses, both north on Franklin and then 10 Mile, as that continues to grow and is under construction. If I can move this here again. So I put in here, Sonia mentioned that there is not a requirement that we, we have an open, have open space as the property is under five, five acres in size. We are proposing, I think it's around 17%, as Sonia mentioned, it's the, the buffer along Linder. And then there's, as well as, as well as that, there's some, some landscaping along the Kennedy lateral there on the north side. But again, yep, no, no amenity proposed. So these, these architectural elevations, we're in Sonia's presentation, but we also are showing you a photo of what that, what that structure will look like. Those duplexes are very nice quality construction. You can kind of see where the, where the two doors, front doors are. One is to the right, kind of to the side a little bit, and then the other one is straight on with the four panes of glass in there, and they're, they're very attractive. And it actually looks like a single-family home from, from the front. So, so that's nice. Sorry, bear with me. And then you saw, yeah, same, same elevations that Sonia had there. Sorry, it's got a delay. Ending it for me. Really, the only thing I wanted to mention was this. So earlier today, I sent Sonia an email in response to the staff report, and I want to touch it once. Awesome. So there is a silver maple there, as you can see on the Linder frontage. We are not proposing to remove that, and we will leave that there. I, I believe that it is likely in the right-of-way, but we will not be removing that as part of, as part of our project. And then, one of the things I wanted to mention was, in it, in regards to the specific caliper inches required by the city arborist is, I believe, based on his assumption that we will, we will be removing all of the trees. And so I wanted to make sure that that condition, there was some flexibility and discussion with, with him, so that we can come up with what that number is. And so I'm comfortable, you know, having the condition in there that we mitigate, because that's, that's a code requirement. But we're going to try to keep as many of the trees as we can. And, you know, obviously, some, some will have to be removed, and then we'll, we'll work with the city arborist at that point and, you know, come up with that calculation. And so really, I really have no concern with the condition, other than the, the specific caliper inches that, that are being requested, that we mitigate for, which may not end up being the actual total. With that, I guess I don't, I don't have any other, any other comments, unless you have any questions for me.
Thanks, Josh. One question I've got. So surrounding this site, you've got some R8, but also some R4 densities kind of backed up to it. Did you consider any other layouts that might have a little less density and more towards the R4 type format?
No, and, and this is mostly because this is, this is the product type that, you know, that we've selected here, and it fits within a comprehensive plan. So, so I guess I didn't, didn't have any concerns, at least initially with that, you know, there, there is R8 directly across Linder from, from this property. And, you know, the, the proposed density is, is not, not significant. You know, we're below six, which is pretty smack in the middle of what would be allowed in that comprehensive plan designation. So are there, are there thoughts as, as to why you're, you're asking that, the question there?
Yeah, and, you know, we can certainly get into it more when we get to more discussion. But one of my concerns, looking at it, and something that's come up quite frequently when we have commission meetings is, with some of these cul-de-sacs, it gets tough when you've got so many different homes sharing the access for trash collection or for just having cars, you know, coming in and out of tight cul-de-sacs when you've got more than six or seven properties that are tied into it. So it's always a little bit of a concern. I know this is a tough infill piece, because you can't access off of Linder Road directly, and ACHD is not going to allow for that. But just was wondering if you'd considered some other layouts that might be a little lower density, but bigger, bigger space product?
For sure. This is not the first layout we've, 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 we've looked at here. And we've actually lost, believe it or not, lost one lot already to kind of help with that. But it, you know, it's, it's one of those things where it, feel like it meets the, meets code. It's, it's, it's the product that we like. It's a product that, you know, it's, aside from the several duplexes that are there on that west side, the, all the single-family homes match what is constructed, you know, by, by Mr. Jewett himself on the nursery subdivision, just, just north of this. So it's going to tie in nicely with, with existing, existing construction and the neighborhood. And, you know, there is on-street parking, but, you know, as you said, we'll have to figure out how to make the, if the concern is the trash receptacles, which, which I, is what I'm hearing. That's, that's something that we can definitely address, you know, with bringing those to the end of the, end of the common driveway, obviously, so they can be picked up. But that's, you know, that's once a week, and it's for a few hours in the morning. So I guess, I guess that's, that's my response.
Okay. Thanks, Josh. Any other questions for Josh?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Seal.
And, and looking at the layout was, have you given any thought into possibly putting a pathway that connects in between, it's like lots 58 and 59, you know, and providing some path?
Yep. Get that, get that connectivity out to Linder Road. That's the idea. Now, obviously, because the garages are going to be facing internal, and the front doors will face out on Linder, we, we need to be able to get folks to their, to their front door, so that, that's, you know, functionally for those, for those units there, as well as, you know, the rest of the neighborhood and, you know, the nursery subdivision and on back into Mallard Landing. This, in addition to the, the emergency access just north in, in the nursery subdivision, will, will help with that pedestrian connectivity a lot, especially once the highway district widens the road and eventually builds a, a bridge over, over the freeway.
So you, you will be putting a pathway in between lots 58 and 59?
I, I believe that is the location, yes.
Okay, it's, it's not depicted anywhere. And then is there going to be a pathway, some kind of pathway that is in all the, all this common area that connects everything together as well?
On, on the north side of?
Right, yeah, the, the north side and, north side and the west side of the subdivision. If there was something that could at least kind of connect that together to make, you know, maybe a walking path or some kind of amenity here.
Well, there, there is a walking path on, on the north side of the property, along the Kennedy lateral that was constructed with the nursery subdivision. So, so that's already in place. And it's just another, you know, 10 feet north of our property boundary, if even that far. And then, yeah, so the west side, that will help, those residents will have access to their, to their property from the front door. But a lot of what gets constructed on Linder there is going to be up to, up to the highway district and their timing and of widening the road and, and and all of that, if that answers your question. But yeah, so there, there will be some connectivity on the west. And there already is on the north, I guess.
Okay, and I mean, my question was, I'm, I look at all of these like they have to stand on their own. So, and I mean, saying that it's in another sub doesn't answer that question for me. So there, there's probably something in there, but for them to have to cross over the lateral and go use somebody else's facility takes them out of what you're proposing here.
Okay, so I guess practically speaking, it, in my mind, it, it does not make any sense to parallel a pathway on, on both sides of the, of, of the ditch. And, and there's, there's obviously, there's, there's, Jim Jewett actually has, has a comment. If, if somebody wants to turn him on as well. But, but yeah, that's, that's, that's the idea, is I, I understand what you're saying, that, you know, they need to quote, "stand on their own." But, but I, I guess that, that doesn't make any sense to me, so.
Mr. Clerk, can we, can we get Jim on? There he is. Hi, Jim. If you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record, that'd be great. And it looks like you're unmuted. There you go.
All right. Hey, good evening, everyone. Jim Jewett, 776 East Riverside Drive, Suite 204, Eagle, Idaho. So this is a new one for me, these Zoom ones, so I hope I perform okay.
You're doing just fine.
So, so this is a continuation of our existing landing number 13, which is to the north. This plat will actually annex to that HOA, be part of that, part of its common area, part of all of the HOA functions. So it's, it's not a standalone. We didn't build the pathway along the Kennedy to not only serve the current phase, but other phases within Mallard Landing, as well as this phase. That's why we have Mallard Landing logo there, because we are annexing to that subdivision. That subdivision in total is 450 some homes, has pocket parks, has some other recreational amenities to it. So we do have the existing pathway on our common space along our north boundary. We'll connect seamlessly into that common area, so it won't be separated from a fence. The only fence we propose will be from that new common area to our lots. So there will be a seamless meld into that existing common area. I do believe when ACHD improves Linder Road, they will put in the 10-foot pathway that will connect to our pathway. So we will have that connectivity. I don't think anybody's in favor within those jurisdictions of rebuilding anything now that they would simply just tear down. We will just use the existing sidewalks. We'll connect the sidewalk or pathway I'm proposing between the two units that the other commissioner mentioned, those two lots. We will connect that pathway over to the existing sidewalk. And that sidewalk is currently connected to the pathway we built in the landing number 13. To answer the other question about lot sizes, you know, we went back and forth with staff on, on this configuration, and we did lose a lot and reconfigured to try to meet everybody's criteria. This is a continuation of the same product we have in the landing, same lot size, same product. There was some concern about parking. We showed those, those six defined parking spots. And, sorry, my TV came on. We also, I've also talked to Sonia about, for the four duplexes, providing a trash receptacle instead of cans for those, those rentals. So I think that would alleviate the concern about the trash receptacles being put out. We would have one enclosure for those four buildings, or eight units. I think I may have addressed all the commissioners' questions that, that Josh may not have had. If there's any more, I'll be happy to answer.
Thank you, Jim. I, I do have one more question, too. So on the, the homes are going to be facing Linder, is what it sounds like, and it's a rod iron type fencing, so that it's kind of open? Is that what I heard?
Yeah, so the, the thought process there was to give a different streetscape, other than always looking at back of a house. So we would put the, the fronts of the buildings, which you saw in my existing building, they showed there. And they would have a sidewalk coming from the front door out to the existing sidewalk and future pathway. And then there would be rod iron fence with gates at each one of those sidewalks entering your house. So it's more of a rowhouse look, more of a downtown feel, is what we're trying to create.
Okay. My only concern with that, I, I like the concept, because I, I like the look of that. But Linder right here is kind of a sleepy road right now, but at some point in Meridian's future, that road's planned to go over the interstate as an overpass, and it will become a little bit more like probably what Locust Grove looks like today. Do you see any concerns with that, as, you know, the road gets widened and developed out?
Well, certainly, we would have additional concerns with how pedestrians would cross that road and how children would cross that road. Because currently, right now, they cross several times a day for the different classes going out of elementary school. So I, I'm assuming ACHD would address that issue with crosswalks and signage that would allow for that, those pedestrian crossings. Our buildings are set back quite a bit, because we have the additional right-of-way that we're giving to ACHD. Then we have the 25-foot landscape buffer, and then we have a setback to our buildings. So we're, we're set back considerably far, and we would orientate these people's yards to the site. And so the front would just be more of that front appearance, like you would Harrison Boulevard or some of the things in Boise in the north end that you might see. So I really think that that's just a different concept, and they're still there. They're driving, the parking would be in their garages, which would be accessed from our internal street. So I think that all of it will come together in cohesion, once all the final pieces of the ACHD comes together.
Thanks, Jim. Any other questions for the applicant? Commissioner Grove.
For you guys, I'm looking at this, and I have some of the same concerns that staff mentioned in terms of parking, off-street parking. Is, is that something that you are, have concerns with or could address more fully?
So is that a question for me?
For either you, Jim, or Josh, not sure who.
I'll go ahead and try. If somebody could pull up the, the map that shows the parking, that would be helpful for me. But Sonia did discuss with this me, with both pre-op and in subsequent conversations, that the city is becoming more concerned with on-street parking. And so that's why we specifically addressed it. And we addressed it by identifying two different parking spots at the end of both common drives that are technically off-street, because they're on the common drive, not on the public street. And then the, the product with any lot, you have a driveway, then you have some limited area for, for on-street parking beyond the driveway. So we've identified those in that area. Unfortunately, the rest of the, the, the street is, is, it has either fire hydrants and/or driveways, which people can't park in front of those. But we have provided, for example, on the duplexes, two parking spots per side, so eight, four parking slots per lot on those, and then on any residential lot. lot on those. And then on any residential lot, they would have their two behind their garage as well. Um, I, I think that overall parking can be an issue. I think there has to be some regulation internally within the subdivision and the HOA to eliminate permanent people using that and not just visitors, because the intention is just for visitors. Um, I think from our point of view, it's hard for us to plan for that, not knowing who our, who our specific buyer will be. We know generally what our buyer would be, and that buyer is going to have two trucks, two vehicles. And generally, if they fill their garage, like I, some high times do, they park outside their garage, which then eliminates some visitor parking. Um, it, I don't know if there's a perfect solution to that. Um, I think we've done the best we can by providing the two per common driveway at each end and the two that are identified. And there obviously are additional parking on the next, our faces, base to the north. Against our common area, there's additional parking that's not being utilized, but we didn't use it in this calculation because we're loo- looking at this phase only. Currently, we don't have a parking problem in our existing phase, and we have, um, I think just two lots left to build on in that phase, maybe three. And we have not, we do have some on-street parking. Um, but we, it's, it's mainly because of the construction right now, not to homeowners. Um, so once the construction gets done, then we, we don't have the construction trailers or construction vans parked overnight there, and it alleviates the problem.
Thanks, Jim.
Thanks.
Any other questions, follow-ups?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Steele.
Just touching on the construction piece of this where there, there is, um, some curbside there, is there, I mean, would you be willing to build this out to where the construction does come in off Linder Road until, you know, such time as you have to seal that off for the, the last duplex, let's say?
Commissioner Steele, so before you answer that, Jim, I think the ACHD wasn't going to allow them to have that access unless I was wrong, and staff has a different opinion there.
Well, just, just for the construction piece of it while they're before occupancy, I guess, is what I would. Not that I, not that I want to provide a way to work around regulation, but I mean, that, that is a really, that, to me, looking at the concerns of the folks around there, to have all the construction traffic go in and out would be, um, not, not pleasant.
Um, so let, let me, and I, construction-related traffic is always an issue in a multi-phase development. And we do our best to try and limit that. We try to provide a construction entrance. I really don't see why ACHD would not grant us a construction entrance, specifically when we're building the subdivision and probably temporary during the construction, but I couldn't guarantee that. But until they build Linder Road out, I believe they would allow us that construction entrance. And I would certainly ask for it, and I will do every effort I can to accomplish that. I think it's a wise idea. Um, I do recognize that construction traffic with these homeowners just doesn't always meld real well. And so we always endure to try to figure out a way.
And Sonia, did you have, uh, any opinions on that from staff's perspective? Would they be able to have a construction access?
Uh, Madam Chair, members of the commission, um, that is an ACHD decision. Um, I, I do think it would be a good idea. Can certainly pursue that with ACHD.
Thank you. Any other questions before we open up for public testimony?
Madam Chair.
Hang on, Jim. Um, we'll ask Commissioner Pitzer for her comments first, and then we'll open it back up to you.
Uh, thank you. Uh, Jim, so these lots that are fronting, uh, Linder. So they have a sidewalk that goes from around the building to the front, or I'm, I'm not quite clear on how they access or their, or their company or their guests access their property without going through their garage. Could you help me understand that?
Yes. So their, their front doors would, would face, um, either directly to Linder or to the side. And we are proposing to put a sidewalk down between lots fifty-eight and fifty-nine. So a visitor coming in or somebody that's even not necessarily a visitor, somebody coming to locate them for whatever reason via address could, we would have signees there that they could walk out to the sidewalk and find their front door. Um, if it's a direct guest that they know they're coming, they would park in their driveway and go through their side gate. So there would be a side gate in their side yard that would lead to the front door as well. Um, it's a, it's a little bit of a, of a twist from what is more predominant in like a North End or more urban area. And it's a concept that's well-accepted in those areas. And I know that the city would like to see more of that urban development, and I, I think that it will be well-received here. Although it's different. And, uh, I, I do understand that, and I do appreciate your question. And I hope that I've answered for you. And so we will have the sidewalk and we will have signees identifying so people know how to get their front door.
Okay, so, uh, sorry, follow-up question. Uh, so there is a sidewalk that goes between fifty-eight and fifty-nine, not necessarily a, a walk path, but a sidewalk. Then it comes to the front of the property and then does another sidewalk then go to lots fifty-seven and sixty?
So the sidewalk would go from the extent, the Spoonbill Avenue, and it would extend to the sidewalk on Linder Road. And then each unit would have a sidewalk that would connect from their front door, their front porch, to Linder Road. So along that stretch, you would have nine, you can envision, you would have nine sidewalks going from the, the sidewalk on Linder Road to their front porch, and then one going between lots fifty, I think it's fifty-eight and fifty-nine, that would access the cul-de-sac.
Okay, yeah, okay. Yeah, so there's kind of like alley-loaded. Okay, all right. Thank you, Jim. I understand that. Thank you for the clarification.
And I, I would like to address one more thing on, on the construction engines. When, when we built the landing number thirteen and we, we had that emergency access that goes out onto Linder Road, um, just coming off that cul-de-sac just to the north of this project. We had a lot of people cutting through the subdivision from the existing Mallard Landing going right out of our emergency access, specifically motorcycles, because they could go right through the ballards. So we successfully stopped that. Um, um, so there is that potential problem with construction entrance that people use as cut-through. So we've, we would, we would certainly gate it and make it secure so that our superintendents would open it up in the morning and close it in the evening, so we would not have the cut traffic. And I think if I did all that, I think I can be very successful in convincing AC to the merits of that for the construction-related only.
Thanks, Jim.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Steele.
Uh, I, I follow. And Jim, thank you for answering the questions and being willing to work with ACHD like that. I really, I, I do appreciate, appreciate that. So, um, just, just a question on the, the pathway as it pertains between fifty-eight and fifty-nine, that, that will change the requirements for the fencing along there. Uh, more a question for staff. Um, since it's going to be a, basically a public walkway, that's going to have to be privacy fencing in there, is that correct?
Um, Madam Chair, members of the commission, um, so, let's back up for just a second here. So if, right now, we don't have a pathway connection between fifty-eight and fifty-nine. So if we're going to require a pathway in that location, that needs to be in your motion uh, for a change to the plat and the landscape plan, and a minimum, um, fifteen-foot wide common lot needs to be provided in order to provide a five-foot pathway or sidewalk and five feet of landscaping on either side. Um, and yes, there are, um, fencing, fencing is required to be constructed by the developer. Uh, the, the code doesn't really restrict fencing, um, when it's visible from public streets. So that would be visible from both Spoonbill and, uh, Linder Road.
Thanks, Sonia.
Does that answer your question? Thank you.
That, that, that did. And I just, like I said, in, in talking through that and them being amenable to it, I just want to make sure that all that was out on the table before we go down that path. Make sure that they're, they're still willing to do that. Because it's going to eat up a little bit of landscape in there.
Yes, thank you. And if the applicant is in agreement again, that there needs to be conditions in the staff report, as I stated. Thank you.
Thanks, Sonia.
Thank you.
Jim, did you have a comment to make with that? Uh, hang on just one second, Commissioner Cassinelli.
Uh, yeah, I apologize for not sending a revised plan. This is something we decided at the last go-around on this, and it just didn't get into the plan. So that is my fault, uh, and I did not warn Sonia it was coming, um, on that pathway. So we will make our modifications to the plat before City Council, and we totally are acceptable to a condition that that be added.
Thanks, Jim. Uh, Commissioner Cassinelli.
Uh, yeah. Jim, can you address the, uh, the size of these units, the square footage? What's, uh, what's the average? What's the max?
So are we referring to the duplexes or the homes?
Uh, yes.
Both, I think.
Okay, so the single-family homes range, we have some product in the fourteen to fifteen-hundred square foot range. And we go up to about eighteen, nineteen-hundred square foot range without going to a two-story. And on these lots, we didn't feel that we wanted to put any two-story product here because of the adjacent neighbors. Um, we, we wanted to keep it all single level. If we do put a bonus room in, we will do a bonus room facing forward only, and that would take us up to maybe twenty-one-hundred square feet. The duplexes are a three-bedroom, two-and-a-half bath per side, two-story townhouse style. And they, uh, one side is roughly fifteen-hundred and fifty square feet, and the other side is roughly sixteen hundred square feet. These are intended to be for the people who want to live in a residential neighborhood, but be a rental and not have ownership. So that's why our square footage, garage size, and everything is comparable to our homes. It's just an option other than either homeownership or home renting.
Commissioner Cassinelli, do you have a follow-up?
Uh, I, I do. Based on, based on the square footage of the, of the, uh, the duplexes, uh, there's, uh, you, you did mention there's four parking spots per side, is that correct?
There's a two-car garage per side, and then a two, minimum two-car pad per side. Some of them have a little bigger pad, because our design is a step-back garage. So one could potentially have four parking spots behind the garage, uh, but they would be stacked.
Okay. And now I know in a, in a rental, addressing the parking, and that's where I'm going with the square footage, the size of these and parking. Renters most likely will fill the garage with, as a storage unit, park, um, park on the pad. But I think there, there, you know, might be enough, little concern there, but thank you for addressing that.
And I can touch on that is, again, I think that's an internal management issue that we have been approaching with a lot of our rentals and not allowing that condition. So if somebody's going to come and live and have two cars and they want to put a lot of stuff in their garage and have both their cars out, we're, we're highly discouraging that. Um, I don't know to the extent that we can require them to park at least one car in the garage, but we are highly discouraging that that be what they do. Um, it's how we're proposing some of the apartments too, is just people will take them our apartments with a garage, put all their junk in the garage, and take up extra parking in the parking lot. And it's more of a management issue that I think more managers got to get on board about addressing people and how they, how they store and how they park.
Thanks, Jim. Um, I, I think it might be good if commissioners don't mind taking a break from questions to open it up for public testimony and then come back for more discussion, if that's all right. Uh, Madam Chair, do we, or Madam Clerk, do we have any, uh, anybody signed up to testify?
Madam Chair, we had one person sign in but did not indicate a wish to testify.
Okay. Um, if anybody would like to testify at this point, if you wouldn't mind just, um, hitting the raise hand button on the attendee panel, it looks like we saw one hand there. Um, and we'll bring you in to, to speak. And we've, we've got about three minutes for you.
Madam Chairman.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay.
If you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record, that'd be great.
Sure. Um, Jeanette Ockerman, twenty-seventy West Waltman in Meridian. So, um, just a few comments about it, probably the same of what everybody else is saying. My concern would be the density along with the parking. Um, I live west of this, and I've noticed, you know, in the denser areas where it's the R eight, the parking seems to like trickle out into other neighborhoods because there is inadequate room for guest parking. And the reality is most people put their stuff in the garage, park in their driveway, and then there's no room for anyone else. Um, so I feel like that is a concern, especially with the duplexes. And they're facing Linder Road, that to me is encouraging parking out on Linder, which isn't a very good idea um, for guests and people. Because right now, Linder is the outlet for all of the subdivisions in that area. Um, so it is fairly busy. I wouldn't call it a sleeper road. Um, I would call it a fairly busy road for our area. Um, and then my other comment was the green space, and I can see that you have it around the edges, but there's really no like area for people to be with, you know, their kids to play or dogs or whatever. It's just the outer landscaped area, not a park area. Um, so those would be my comments for it.
Thanks, Jeanette. We appreciate you being here and, uh, being available to ask those questions. Madam Clerk, is, is there anybody else that's, uh, indicated an interest to speak?
Madam Chair, at this time, I do not see any other hands raised.
Okay. We'll wait for just a second. If anybody needs to hit star nine to unmute themselves, um, or raise their hands, we'll wait for just a second here to see if there's anyone else that would like to speak. This is when we need Chris's Jeopardy music. Uh, hearing none, we'll go back and, uh, let the applicant address some of those concerns and, uh, continue our discussion.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, so I, I think we've, we've discussed the parkings. I, I don't know what, how much more to address that other than what I've already said. As far as the common area, you know, we do have that common area to our north that is adjacent to our existing common area in, in the previous phase. We did build a pathway that goes to the east that eventually ends at a park. Um, or close proximity to the pocket park, which is, is quite large. Uh, people, Y C walk there all the time, take their dogs, exercise. Um, so that amenity does there. We do have the elementary that's across the street. I don't really see why anybody would park on Linder Road. There is, there is no parking strip on Linder Road. There's just two-lane traffic right now. Um, with the widening, I'm assuming they will all be marked, there's no parking, and I would see that no different than like a Harrison Boulevard. You don't park in front of your house on Harrison Boulevard, you park in the alley or on the sides. Um, so I, I, I think I don't see that, that being an issue. And I think I may have addressed our questions. Um, so without it stand for any additional questions.
And Jim or Josh, if you want to make any other closing comments you'd like to make at this point, and then we can start deliberating and asking more questions if we have them. Any other comments you, you know, one of you would like to make?
I'm good right now. So how about you, Josh?
Yeah, I'm, I'm set. It sounds great.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Uh, yes, Sonia.
Excuse me. Um, staff is a little concerned that if we put the pathway in between those two lots that we were discussing earlier, that they could still meet their minimum dimensional standards for the lot size. Um, each dwelling unit requires four thousand square feet. Uh, is that going to be an issue, Jim?
Uh, I have to pull up the plat, but I thought we had some extra square footage yet. Um, I didn't know it was going to be fifteen, but fifteen times hundred and something. I'd have to do the calculations if somebody could pull up a plat. I don't have one in front of me. I could do the, the quick math on it. But yes, the minimum lot size there would have to be eight thousand square feet, and we, we've tried to maintain that. Okay, uh, and I can't read those, sorry.
I, I just want you to not commit to anything that you can't fulfill, so.
So can anybody read those, those square footage of those lots for me? I can't read them.
Uh, give me just a second and I'll bring that up.
Oh, I got it here. So we've got eight thousand, eight thousand, eighty-three hundred and eighty. So the, the one that would go down long is eighty-three hundred and seventy-four. So we have four hundred square feet, and it's a hundred and thirty-eight feet long, hundred and thirty-eight times fifteen. I'm pulling up calculator.
Nothing like doing the math while you've got thirty people watching you.
Oh my gosh, put me under the spot, that's two thousand square feet, so yes, Sonya, you raise a very good point and you wouldn't allow that to be an easement, correct? You would, but if it's not, if it's not a public pathway, if it's just a private pathway for those particular residents, would it necessarily have to be in a common lot and just in an easement?
Well, it should be in a common area, um, I doubt private homeowners are going to want folks, you know, traffic going through their property, and I, didn't you say, is there going to be side fences, side yard fences constructed?
Oh, well, yes, we would, we wouldn't, yes, we would put fences. But but again, this was to give those residents access to theirs, it necessarily wouldn't be for the other ones. Because the other people saw the pathway that we have constructed along the north boundary. Um, it's more of a convenience for those specific guests and or residents that want to seek their front door from their back door. So I don't know why necessarily it would have to be a common lot, it could, it could be an easement and just a concrete sidewalk that would simply have a signage on it with all the addresses. This is something we discussed with the fire, um, if you recall Sonya, by having some identification so that people would know how to reach somebody's front door, and so that's where this came from.
So Jim and Josh, um, I'm going to just make a couple of comments real quick, so I I think there's a couple of things here to me that make me lean towards wanting to continue the application. A couple of those being, one, adjusting the sidewalk and making sure the plat's correct, but for me, I'm still a little bit worried about the density in this pocket with the way that it's configured. You know, I I understand it's a, it's a complicated infill project. It's on the end of a weird bulb out street that kind of connects in and not something we typically see, and I think you've, you've done a lot of due diligence here in trying to design a nice plan and I'm not opposed to duplexes, I think it's really nice to have a diversity of product and certainly need more duplexes in the community and um, I like the way that you're thinking with trying to be innovative and how lots face Linder to kind of make it look more open. I I would lean towards, you know, if if it was me designing the site, and I know I'm not designing the site, this is your project, but I would lean towards wanting to see more of an R four type fit here where there may be a few less lots and give more people, you know, a little bit more space between each other in there, even if you did a duplex style in there around that bulb out. And I I'd certainly open it up for the other commissioners to to talk about too, but I almost wonder if you would be willing to look at a couple other design options and and bring it back to us. And so with that, I'm going to request that the commission just kind of leave it open for conversation instead of closing the public hearing for deliberation so that we might be able to to brainstorm and work with you on it a little bit and ask some questions. So if you don't mind, Jim and Josh, split, give us a few minutes to maybe deliberate with each other first and then we'll open back up to you with some questions if that's all right.
Certainly.
Commissioner Grove.
Is it okay if I jump in for a second?
Please do.
Okay, um, I'm kind of echoing what you said, I, I would tend to agree that I would like to see, um, a different take on this. I like a lot of the aspects of it, I like the duplex, I like opening onto Linder, um, I like that look and feel. But I think that it does need to have that path piece, and if that's not there, um, and it's going to eat up two thousand square feet, like I I don't know how that lays out with what's currently on the the site plan. And I keep going back to the the parking street configuration. I have a, I have a lot of concerns with how that is laid out. I'm not opposed to the the density, I just am not a fan of how it's laid out and how it's going to function once the product is in, so. I I would be in favor of requesting a continuance if if the applicant is open to that idea.
Other commissioners that have comments, um, I know Commissioner McCrabel and Commissioner Castanelli, I can't see your faces, so.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Commissioner Seal.
Question for staff, I know we've talked about, um, this kind of being a, you know, another phase of of the landing and and my question is, and I'm you probably can't answer this on the spot, but if we have a continuance, it would be nice to know. If if you took the P, the different pieces of this as in phases and you added this into it with the common area, does that still make the entire area of development within standards for open space? Or would this require more or less or something along those lines? I'm just trying to piece it all together in my, in my mind as far as how it fits as a project.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Seal, commissioners, I I do not know that answer off the top of my head, that is something that we could ask the applicant to provide though, if you decide to continue this project.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Pittsir.
Well, I I don't have a problem with the, with the, with the duplexes. But but the density overall on on this, on this amount of acres is, I maybe I'm not, not even saying it's the density, but the shared drives where you're having one, two, three, three homes off of each shared drive. The parking with I I just, I mean, someone's going to come in with a big truck and lock one way and someone's trying to get out and I can just see tempers flaring already. And and the, I I think it needs a different configuration. On here, I I just see so many issues, I'm I'm almost, I almost don't know where to start, but some of them have been clarified for me. But I still have an issue with that long shared drive and 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 the parking.
Commissioner McCrabel?
Yeah, I would be in support, no, that's Commissioner McCrabel.
Okay.
Yeah, I would be in favor of continuance and want to see something with just a little more workable configuration, because I agree, I think, trying to live in this once it's all, it may I I, yeah, trying to live in it once it's all done, I think is going to be a challenge.
One, one additional comment I have too, I I really appreciate you working to put in some extra parking stalls, having six extra designated parking stalls. But having them at the end of that kind of private drive, where private drives already are hard to get in and out of, I think there could be some challenges with people needing to reverse all the way down the common drive to get back out once they're parked. So just another thought there to consider for you. Commissioner Castanelli, did you have comments?
Um, I I too would be in favor of seeing a little rework and it may require dropping, uh, even bringing the density down a little bit, not that I'm super opposed to that they've done and and infill, we, you know, every time we we talk about infill, we know the pain and how difficult it can be, so you know, you get, you do what you can to get as creative as you can. But that said, I would, you know, I I'd be in favor of continuance as well.
Okay. Um, do we have any other specific questions you'd like to ask of the applicant? From the commission? You're all pausing, I I would just say, um, I don't know, Jim or Josh, if you have any comments on what we've just deliberated on, I'd be happy to open up to give you a couple of minutes to kind of respond, but I think the the sound of the commission is that we'd be leaning towards requesting a continuance to look into a couple of things, one being the pathway between lots fifty-eight and fifty-nine and seeing how that kind of configures itself. Maybe asking you to reconsider the density. I would ask you to look and see if you could find something a little closer to R four or R six. Maybe it's just something that would eliminate a couple lots and kind of help with some of the transition issues we're having here. And then I know some of the internal circulation was was a challenge as well for the commission, so would you be open to to looking at doing a little bit of reconfiguring and coming back to us?
So, um, let me, uh, try to address this one at a time. First of all, I I have no objection to a continuous. I only ask that we have clear guidance of what you would like me to do. Now, having said that, the first thing I need to R eight is the only zoning that would allow the duplex. R four would not allow that. That's one of the reasons for asking for the R eight zoning, because that's the only zoning that would allow those. Secondly, because of how this infill is shoehorned in and I'm not allowed access onto Linder Road, there's not a whole lot of different configurations and we have to use common drives. Either that or just have long skinny lots or just some dysfunctionality in the lots. So we either have, we're going to have a dysfunctionality somewhere. And we worked with staff quite diligently on different aspects, we worked with ACHD. We had a different configuration when we started, ACHD didn't like it, we worked through that and we finally arrived on this configuration, which did lose one lot to suffice that. So I don't know what we could do internally in design other than the street we have. So the next thing is, is, okay, how do you configure without the common drives? Then you just end up with longer and skinnier lots. Which I don't know if that's more desirable. It just, it just, it just, and I don't think you're losing, you would not be losing one lot, you would be losing considerable because of that. So I don't know how to really to reconfigure it anymore than we already have without having additional considerations from ACHD and access off of Linder would certainly change things, but that's been already testified that that's just a no go with them. It is an infill, it it is shoehorned into what, and these are all comparable to the lots I have that where you're driving in from. They're all very comparable to those. So, um, so I don't know, I say, to go to R four zoning means I lose the duplexes, then it changes everything. I, again, I don't know how to reconfiguration the roads, private drives are part of the code, they are allowed, we have met all the criteria of them. So I guess I would ask for some additional insight of exactly knowing that additional information outside of trying to figure out that pathway connection between fifty-eight and fifty-nine, which I will work on, I will get done. I don't know what else, what other kind of configuration other than just simply changing.
Well, and I I think that that might be what we're asking, is that you might consider changing the the model you've got here. As much as we like some elements of it, I think it's, it's a tough, it's a tough infill project on a two, two and a half acre, not even two and a half acre site. You know, one thought just looking at top of mind, and again, I'm not an engineer and I'm not a site planner, but, you know, potentially looking at doing maybe you've got two sets of duplexes on the top part of the, um, the drive in and then you put a couple of your home sites on the bottom to round it out a little better, so you do you know, four duplex units and two residential units and see if that helps with the bulb out, but I I don't know what that looks like until it's sketched out, but that's just a thought.
Yeah, um, trust me, when I say we've looked at a lot of different configurations with this over the time we've been working on it, and I don't know how I can change the the road configuration, it would just be changing lots. And quite frankly, we'll just wait that that's going to be the end result, we'll wait, we're not in any hurry. So if it's a matter of just time, I just don't think that financially it makes sense to do anything less than where we're at. We've put a lot of thought into this design, it works, it's, it's within the code. And I think that we've worked beyond the code to try to accomplish some of the concerns that I know the city has, and I think we've always worked towards that. So outside of just saying, like, lose a common drive and configure the lots. I don't know what else I
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Seal.
Just, I I mean, just kind of as food for thought, I I look at this a- as far as the parking and circulation and, I mean, the, the only thing I can offer is imagine if you will, because there's, you know, thousands of mobile services that come in and they all, they all come in and they all have a you know, a trailer attached to them, uh, imagine something like that coming into this, this area and needing to do business in there, it's, it's almost to me, that that almost wouldn't, wouldn't work or would, you know, like some of the other commissioners commented, that that's going to cause some heated debate because they're going to have to park somewhere, so that's in in looking at the circulation of it, I mean, people are going to be people. And I'm, and I'm very sympathetic to 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 everything that you guys have to look at and be concerned about here, so I mean, if 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 people use their garages as garages and, um, not for storage and didn't have, you know, their buddies come over and park on the street, it wouldn't be an issue, and unfortunately, we kind of live in the, in those times, but I'm more concerned with, you know, the element of what happens when like a service vehicle needs to come in, um, you know, even a ref, you know, an appliance repair person, um, something with a trailer, they're, they're just going to have issues with not only getting in and out but with parking as well, so and 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 I know you asked for clear direction and and that's, that's the clearest direction I can think of is, is how, how can you successfully accommodate something like that into this? Just to make it, you know, a a better community overall, and again, I really like I I like what you've done for an infill project, there's a lot going on in here for a really small space. You know, and the fact that you're willing to to, you know, work to provide that path to make, you know, make all of that work is is commendable, I just you know, again, I I'm just thinking about the roadway condition and the circulation and and just, you know, imagine if you will, somebody coming in there with a service trailer to try and provide some type of service. Hopefully that's helpful.
It is, uh, thank you, Commissioner Seal. But but I don't know how I can change the road configuration outside of removing the common drive that goes to the east. And if I remove the common drive, I could probably come up with a design that has five lots in it instead of six. And they'd be a little more irregular shape, um, a little deeper. I mean, if that's the direction you want me to go, I can certainly go down that path. But if you're asking me to somehow come up with a different configuration for Spoon Hill Avenue, I I don't know, I don't know what what I would do. And that's why I'm looking for the insight, if you want me to create a different circulation pattern on the street, what might that look like?
Yeah, Jim, for me, I think if you were to remove that access drive that kind of goes to the east with the the way those other lots are off of that, that shared drive there, that would fix a lot of things for me. Again, I'd have to see it, but you're you're probably right, you'd have to remove a lot and just make them a little bit more regular shape to to fit it in there. That's what I'd love to see is just a different configuration if you can, and maybe, maybe lose one or two lots there to see if, if we can make it feel a little better in here.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Sonya.
Um, if I may, I just wanted to clarify the record, uh, the applicant stated that duplexes, two family duplex dwellings are prohibited in the R four district, they are actually a conditional use. But that would require eight thousand square feet per unit, so sixteen thousand square foot lots.
So that's certainly something for you to consider, you know, if you decided to do that, we could probably, I, Sonya, I don't know if they could put a conditional use request in if they did come back with an R four with some of these duplexes, is that something that could be possible still?
Uh, yes, um, Madam Chair, we could just continue it out so that the noticing requirements for the conditional use permit could be met. I'm not sure the applicant would be in agreement with that, but I just wanted to clarify the record that it is, um, a conditional use in R four.
Thanks, Sonya.
And, uh, yeah, so you would take my four lots and make them two, and so you would have, and that just really doesn't fit, fit the model for us. And again, I could, I could keep the configuration, I could, would take the existing cul-de-sac and pivot it slightly to the east, lose the common drive and reconfigure those lots and probably end up with five lots, maybe four. And then that, by moving it, I get a little extra room in the duplex lots to accommodate that common lot between those fifty-eight, fifty-nine. I would a net loss of one by lose the common drive, and I I think I can accomplish that, um, for the commission. But if they're looking at me going to an R four, um, I think that just, that that just well, first of all, an R four, I think it's an eight thousand square foot minimum lot and then sixteen on duplexes, I would lose two duplex lots and I would probably lose And I would probably lose two of the single-family lots. And then it just becomes financially not feasible to do. Um, I currently have two rentals on the property now. Um, I, I, I would just stay in that configuration and just, and not develop it right now. Um, so, I, I guess what I'd be looking for is direction, if, if, if that's sufficient enough change for you to, uh, move forward on that. And if it's not, then I guess that's a decision. I, I, I'm not comfortable going back and doing something I can't do. I hope you understand and respect that, that, um, you know, there, everything has to financially model. Um, not that we have to get rich on everything, but it does have to financially make sense. And losing that significantly to duplex lot does not make financial sense. Right there, I think that's, it eliminates the feasibility of the project before we even start.
Thanks for your feedback, Jim. I appreciate it. Um, for the commissioners, I think I, it would alleviate my concerns if, if that was, if they were to remove that common drive and reallocate kind of that cul-de-sac coming in to adjust for the, the walkway to Linder Road as well as eliminating one or two of the lots on the east side and reconfiguring those. That would help me a lot with the way that this looks. But I don't know what your thoughts are, and if somebody would like to make a motion saying something similar to that and giving him really specific advice. Uh, Commissioner Grove.
Okay, uh, Madam Chair, uh, I have a question and I don't, I'm not still new to all this a little bit. So, wh- what would, would it, what would it look like? And instead of going R four, really leaning into the R eight aspect of this, um, and reconfiguring, um, with additional, um, duplex units rather than single-family homes, does that significantly change the product, um, layout? And would that allow for, let's say, a larger cul-de-sac or something, um, of that nature? Um, that would encourage, um, a more spaced-out, um, driving and parking area, um, but retain some of the density, um, that is included with this, um, site layout.
Commissioner Grove, uh, that actually was one of our considerations going in. Um, but we felt a need to, to add some buffer between ourselves and those existing residential houses. And I, we went with these single-family, single-level homes as a good buffer to the two-story duplexes. Um, so, I'll, yeah, so the answer to your question is yes, that would work. And, um, i- it, we could change things immensely. Um, it just, you open up a different set of, of issues that I don't know specifically if I'm comfortable with that, right, at this point in time. Because all my neighborhood meetings, everything that I had done with my neighbors has been based on what I have proposed. So if I did that, I'd have to go back to them and make sure I get their feedback first. Um, which I'm totally okay with doing. Um, but again, I just would not clear direction from the, from the commission on that's what they want me to do. And I would also like to state that I do really do appreciate the interaction, uh, with the commission. I think it's all positive and I think it's all for the right reason, and I do appreciate it all.
Go ahead, Commissioner Pitser.
Yes, um, I, I would like to entertain a motion to close the public testimony.
Um, Commissioner Pitser, if we are planning to continue the application, we'd have to leave it open.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Seal.
Uh, just a question for that. Can I, I mean, i- i- is it, is a continuance in your mind helpful at this point with, with what you've been given? Or, uh, because what you kind of noodled around seems like something you could come back with already and, and, uh, you know, hit us with and we might all go, yeah, that might work a little bit better. And, and I think this, just, you know, the overall circulation of it is kind of what it comes down to and trying to ease those concerns.
Uh, Commissioner Seal, I, if it's losing the common drive and reconfiguring those lots to be a, an R four style lot, I would, I would be completely in agreement to continuous to do that. So basically, I'd still ask for an R eight zoning. So the duplex could be allowed at their current configuration, but the other lots would be in R zone, R four size lot. So if that, if that's a, a stipulation that comes out of this, I can agree to go and reconfigure that and do a continuance to accomplish that. So I would take those six four thousand square foot lots and I would create however many R four lots I could create, create out of it and lose the common drive. The one common drive. The other common drive suits the duplex and it's only accessing the duplex. So, um, I would ask that that one remain.
I, I think that'd be reasonable for me. I don't know about everybody else.
Uh, I would agree. And Sonia, is that something that they would have to get a conditional use in order to accommodate for those to have an R four, um, sizing standard? Or is that something that would fit into the R eight with what they currently have? Well, with what would be designed into what they have, I should say.
Before Sonia answers, I think, you know, if, if they're looking for an R eight designation, they can go bigger. They just, it gives them the ability to have the duplexes at the smaller size lot. So I think that they'd still be okay, but I don't know if we have minimum standards, Sonia, if that would work if they did that.
Yeah, I just, considering there is a difference between the R four and the R eight, I just want to make sure that we're not, you know, asking them to do something w- with those, um, single, single occupancy, you know, in the R four standard that can't be accommodated when it's, you know, technically an R eight, if that makes sense.
And, and I don't know if where Sonia is, but that's the pro- pro- purpose of the DA. So within the DA, you would condition that the lots would not be smaller than an R four size lot. Um, and so that's how you would accomplish that. And we've done it before. And it's, it's four specific things like this where if something fits in one zoning, but you want a lot size that fits in another zoning, that they've used a development agreement as the, the tool.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Sonia.
I, I'm sorry, I was speaking earlier, but I was on mute. So I was right here with you. But, um, you guys all have it right. I mean, the, the applicant, what he just said is correct. You could, you know, restrict it further through the development agreement. Bottom line is, if you're doing duplex in an R four district, it requires a conditional use permit. Either way you go, depending on what zoning district you go with, it has to meet the dimensional standards of the district at a minimum. If you increase the number of units beyond, I don't think we're thinking that, but if, if we do, then that would require a renotice beyond what they've already got. So.
But I think what they're talking about doing is deleting a couple of, um, lots and making it bigger.
Yeah, just saying if they went the other way and did duplexes all the way around, if that would by chance increase their unit count then, or lot count, I should say, it would require renotice. Thank you.
Thanks, Sonia. Um, I don't know if anybody feels comfortable making a, a motion with some of those suggestions.
I do.
One.
Madam Chair, we, we would need to know, um, a, a date that we would be able to do the continuance to.
I was just about to ask Sonia. Sonia, um, I know we, we probably will not be having a meeting on July second. And the next one after that would be July ninth or the sixteenth. Are either one of those good options?
Um, one thing real quick for the applicant to ponder, I would need revised plans at least ten days prior to the hearing date we choose. So keep that in mind.
With that, we could look at August sixth, too.
Yeah, just make sure we don't cut it too close on time to give the applicant time to revise and staff time to review.
For us, the route would take a couple of weeks at the most. So I, any date in July or even early August, I think you'd look at your schedule to see how busy you are and we would fit whatever one is least busy, I guess, to make it easier.
July sixteenth would work. If that works for the applicant.
It works for me.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Seal.
I move to continue file number H twenty twenty zero zero five to the hearing date of July sixteenth, twenty twenty. Um, so that the applicant work with, can work with ACHD to provide, or to possibly provide a construct, geez, sorry, construction entrance off of Linder Road until initial occupancy. Um, so the applicant can also work to provide a pathway between lots fifty-eight and fifty-nine that complies with all city code, code including fencing standards. And to work, um, to possibly reduce density or modify the design to improve parking and circulation. Um, and then they provide the, or they provide the revised plot to city staff ten days prior to the hearing.
Commissioner Seal, one more question for you. Do you want to add in addition to the extent of what the applicant suggested of creating those lots on the east side and removing that common drive to be more of an R four?
Um, yeah, what I, well, and I, I mean, I, I put it in here to work to possibly reduce the density or modify the design. I, I mean, I, I want to give him as much leeway as possible. I, I like what he's saying, and I think we've given him enough direction to accomplish that. So.
I just know he, he requested some specific direction. So maybe it's just adding, following the direction of what the applicant proposed during the hearing.
Right. So essentially worked to a possible reduce density, um, by following the instruction given at the planning and zoning meeting to improve parking internal circulation, um, and provide the east lots with a more of an R four designation status.
Do I have a second?
Uh, second. Question, I guess, sorry, it, would it be, it's not an R four status, it'd be an R four sizing. Is that? Do I understand that correct?
I, I think that's correct.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Uh, yes.
Uh, there was discussion, um, regarding the sidewalk and whether it would, it fits. And the applicant indicated he needed to make that work. Did that one to be included in the motion?
I, I believe that Commissioner Seal had that in the motion.
Did you address that? Thank you.
I did.
All right, a- any other discussion? I have a motion by Commissioner Seal and a second by Commissioner McCarville. Um, i- if you wouldn't mind, Madam Clerk, would you take role in this one?
Absolutely. Let me, I wasn't prepared for that.
Just since we've got a couple of people on the phone, it's hard to tell what their, whether the yeses or no's are.
Sure, I totally understand. Um, Commissioner Seal.
Hi.
Commissioner McCarville.
Hi.
Commissioner Pitser. Commissioner Grove.
Hi.
Commissioner Cassinelli.
Hi.
Commissioner Holland.
Hi. All right. Thank you, Jim and Josh. We appreciate you working with us and we'll look forward to seeing you in July.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to the next item on the, um, agenda, which is the Villas at Twelve Oaks East, uh, H dash twenty twenty dash zero zero one four. And I think we may see Jim again here pretty soon. Um, we'll go ahead with the staff report first.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Give me just a moment here. All right, the next application before you is a request for annexation and zoning. There is also a, an accompanying modification to the existing development agreement on the adjacent property to the west, which does not require commission action. This site consists of six point six three acres of land. It's owned R one in Ada County and is located at one one five South Linder Road on the west side of Linder, just south of West Franklin Road. Adjacent land use and zoning to the north are commercial uses, um, and a fuel facility, Zone CC. To the south and east are single-family residential uses, Zoned R four. And, um, to the north on the east side is undeveloped commercial land, Zone CN. And to the west is multifamily, Zoned TNR, which is currently in the development process. A development agreement exists, as I mentioned, on the property to the west that is proposed to be amended to include the subject property. That property is underdeveloped by the, underdevelopment by the same, um, developer. The commercial future land use map, excuse me, commi- comprehensive plan, future land use map designation for this property is commercial. The applicant requests annexation and zoning of six point six three acres of land with a TNR zoning district for the development of eight multifamily structures containing a total of sixty-four apartment units at a gross density of thirteen point nine four units per acre, consistent with the commercial future land use map designation. Multifamily residential developments are a principal permitted use in the TNR district. There is an existing home on the property that is proposed to be retained and used as an additional rental or manager's unit. The site plan depicts access via the extension of a driveway from the west boundary of the site and via South Linder Road. A pedestrian connection is required to be provided to the north to the commercial development for interconnectivity via an existing access easement. This property is planned to develop as a subsequent phase of the multifamily project currently under the development on the adjacent property to the west and will share common open space and site amenities. The overall project exceeds the minimum qualified open space and site amenities required by the UDC. A ten-foot wide multi-use pathway is required along the north side of the Ten Mile Creek from the east to the west boundary of the annexation area and within the street buffer along Linder Road in accord with the pathways master plan. A twenty-five-foot wide landscape street buffer is required along Linder Road. Conceptual building elevations were submitted that are the same as those being constructed in the Villas Twelve Oaks project, um, in the earlier phase to the west. The design of all structures in this development are required to comply with the design standards in the architectural standards manual. Because a development agreement already exists for the property to the west, which again is the developer of the subject property, and modification to the existing agreement is requested to incorporate this property in the agreement rather than require a new separate agreement for this later phase. The applicant requests the removal of the existing development agreement provision that requires an eight-foot tall concrete wall to be, is along the subject property's west boundary. The wall was previously required to buffer the previous rural residential use on the subject property. With the proposed development, it's no longer necessary as the project is proposed to be integrated as one developed, as one development with shared common areas and amenities. Written testimony has been received from Josh Beach, the applicant's representative. They are in agreement with the staff report except for condition B one two, which requires sewer to connect to the north in accord with the master plan rather than to the west as proposed. The Public Works Department has reevaluated the applicant's proposed sanitary sewer routing as well as previous email correspondence with the applicant on the topic of routing and finds that the current proposal is acceptable. Therefore, staff recommends the following language to replace that currently in condition B one two. The applicant shall be responsible to determine whether adequate capacity exists in the receiving sewer system, including two lift stations to accept the additional flow from this development. If upgrades are necessary, the applicant shall be responsible for all costs associated with said upgrades. Staff is recommending approval for the staff report. Staff will stand for any questions.
Sorry, I was talking, but I was on mute. Uh, any questions for Sonia?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Seal.
Just a, a similar question to the last. Um, if, if you take in all the square footage and everything, the open spaces, but the addition of this, does it make the entire project, um, within the required parameters of open space?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Seal, Commissioners, yes, Commissioner Seal, there is an exhibit in the staff report that demonstrates that the overall common open space and site amenities are in excess of UDC standards.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, with that, it looks like, uh, we've got Josh and Jim back to join us again. I know they're having a fun night with us. So thanks, Jim, for joining us again and.
You tried to kick us out a few minutes ago, but we, we didn't leave, so. Um, yeah, so, you know, Sonia covered it pretty well. Uh, it.
I'm sorry, would you just take your name and address to the record again?
I apologize. Josh Beach, uh, twenty thirty South Washington Avenue, Emmett, Idaho. Um, so as Sonia said, this is a, essentially, we're, we're adding to an existing development agreement with a further concept plan, um, showing eight multi-unit, um, buildings with, uh, an additional sixty-four units with associated parking and garages. And, um, there is here on, never forget, I have to move to the next slide here. Hey, there we go. So there will be an access out to, out to Linder Road, and then that will, this, this, this project here, in contrast with what has been approved with the previous phase, does not have any duplexes. This would be an all multi-family with the exception of that one unit that where the existing home is, would either be a rental unit or an office, depending on which direction the applicant decides to go. We, we are providing some open space in, in this phase. And I've got a slide a couple away from this that kind of details that, as I believe your staff report does. But you can see that there is also, we connect a significant stretch of the multi-use pathway from Linder to connect to the, the existing 12 Oaks project there. Just, just to the west. No, I can't figure out how to. This is just, just a zoom in of the, the actual site that we're talking about in contrast to the, the overall development, which includes, as I said, the the other phase of 12 Oaks. And I think, you know, one thing I wanted to mention was typically when we're working through a a, a project like this, one of the things that comes up is, is parking. And so in addition to open space, doing an overall calculation, the same thing was done with the parking. And I think, believe there's an additional 21 parking spaces. Just including the, the apartments for, for both projects, there is an additional 21. Now, that doesn't include the multi, or the duplex parking, because, you know, I think those folks would object to folks that are renting the, the apartments to parking in their driveway as well as the commercial. So I didn't include those. And so, you know, we're not at the bare minimum. We've got an extra roughly 20 parking spaces to, to accommodate guest parking. Okay, so this is, this is the slide that kind of shows you what we got going in terms of overall parking spaces, open space, the number of buildings, you know, these, these, these open space numbers are not broken down into acreage or percentages, or I guess it is a percentage there, but it's not in acreages, but, but that still gets you to, you know, obviously with, with multifamily projects, there's a, there's another section of code that requires some additional, your, 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 your private, 80 square feet of private open space per unit. And then, and depending on the, the size of those units, there's also a requirement for some additional open space. But as Sonya said, we, we meet that requirement independently and then together as well. So, so that, that shouldn't be a concern moving forward. And as I said, you can see here, hopefully on the next slide, if it ever decides to, to move forward here, is the kind of highlighting the section of multi-use pathway that, that, that we're going to be constructing with this project that will connect to what's, what's under construction and will be constructed soon just to the west as part of the, the the other phase of 12 Oaks. And so there will be a, a very good connection there, again, for residents further south on on Linder to include, you know, some of those subdivisions that we were just talking about in a previous application. I'll be able to, you know, walk up Linder and bypass Franklin quite a bit and, and, and maybe get out to some of those businesses that are out there or will be constructed on, on Franklin. Which, which is the idea. So these are, these are similar, if not exactly the same as those buildings in 12 Oaks. These are actually of 12 Oaks. I went up there and took some photos of the buildings, you know, that are now built and they're, they're very attractive quality construction, you know, there's, there's some, some side elevation, that top left photos of the, of the garages, it's kind of the side of the garage. And there's some nice elements there to kind of make those attractive. And then the, the garage building is just next to that as well as the the two-story buildings, which are again, were approved by, by staff. Meet design standards. So I have every, every belief that, you know, the, the buildings that we're building in, in, in this phase would also meet that. So that, that shouldn't also not be a concern. I guess I don't, I don't really have much else to, to say beyond that. I know there was a this is, it's a successful project, you know, those, those, those are very attractive buildings out there. I'm not don't see any concerns in terms of parking. Open space is ample, you know, there's, there's quite a bit there, even if, you know, there's already the several amenities within the first phase and the amenity that we're adding now for the 10-foot multi-use pathway just, just adds to that. And, you know, I think it's going to be a nice project and it'd be a benefit to the area that, you know, needs, needs some some excitement and some growth. With that, I'll, I'll stand for any questions. That's all I've got today.
Thanks, Josh. Hey, Josh, on the 12 Oaks East, I know there was one rendering that kind of showed a three-story building. All the ones proposed for the east that we're looking at right here are just two-story buildings. Is that correct?
So, and you referenced west, correct? Yeah, though there, there are two three-story buildings in the previous phase, but in this phase, there will be just two stories.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying. I appreciate it.
Correct.
Uh, any other questions for Josh or Jim? I know is on the line as well.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Seal.
Just a quick question. There's the, the commercial spaces to, to the north of this. And I know they have, just because I've driven back there a couple of times, they have dumpsters along that. How does that align with where these apartment complexes are? Are they? Did you guys try and match that up with where the drive aisles are? Are they going to be, you know, right by some of the apartments?
Yeah, so if you go back to.
Wind kind of blows that way.
Sure, right. So there, there's a, there's a concrete wall that separates the, kind of the commercial property to the north and this property. And we'll have to, we'll have to, you know, cut a hole in that. But you're right, there, there is some, there are some dumpster back in that area. Now, I walked the site the other day and we'll have to, we'll have to coordinate that and, and make sure that you know, obviously that, that all works in terms of getting pedestrians through there. And, and we can definitely, you know, have discussion with that property owner to the north as to where they, they have their dumpster. Now, whether or not we can require them to move anything is, is another question, but we can, we can definitely have those, have those discussions. But you can see, and I need to go back a couple of slides, I think you're probably so, you can see what I'm talking about. You can see, I don't know how to use the mouse, but you can see between some open space on that north side and where the parking basically looks like a common driveway. You can't really tell that it punches through, but that's the general location. Just, just how to describe that. You can probably see what I'm talking about, but there's a couple of lines going north that will be where the I can't tell. Can you, can you see it with the mouse on this thing there?
Yeah, just, just below the E and N and open. Looks like there's going to be one there and then below the T on amenities, looks like there's possibly another one there.
No, no. So just between the E and the, yeah, the E and the N and open is where the, the cross access is. There, there is not a cross access.
Okay.
The other, on the other side, further east, it's just, just that, just that one.
And there won't be.
Go ahead.
Sorry, I was gonna say, there's, there won't be a drive access. It's just a pedestrian access, correct?
That, that's correct. That's correct. So with the pedestrian access, then that becomes, it's not as, as, obviously not as wide, but we would have to coordinate with the that property owner provided a cross access and we're going to be providing the same thing. We'll, we'll, we'll coordinate that and, and get that accomplished there and figuring out where that needs to be and, and making sure that it, it, it makes sense in terms of, you know, getting pedestrians back and forth. Because that city meridian and, and as most cities should, makes that, makes an effort to connect properties together. And in this case, it would be just pedestrian, but that goes a long way when you've got a a gas station there with the, you know, snacks. There's also a, a restaurant and a coffee shop in that and then several. And you know, there's a, there's a bar in that, in that strip mall anyway. And so the idea is to get folks back and forth with having to go out on Franklin and Linder.
Great place to get a hard shell coated dip cone.
There you go.
Yes, it is. Yeah, and, and again, my concern was just where the, the placement of the dumpsters are and how that's going to, you know, how that lines up with all the apartments. If it's going to be in real close proximity, they're probably not going to. It's not going to be a pleasant experience sometimes.
95 degree summer day, you never know. Yeah, no, so we, we, we can work with that. I think there's a very kind of a from what I remember looking at that easement, it's pretty defined in terms of where the cross access is. Sometimes it's anywhere on the whole border of the property, you can, you can have a cross access and I'll have to look into that. But I'm fairly certain it's a pretty specific, maybe Jim can, can, can speak to that if he remembers. But, but I believe that's why it's placed in that location is because that's, that's the that's where it's legally recorded and located is, is, is right there.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions from the commission? All right, Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed in to testify?
Madam Chair, we have one person signed in to testify or one couple signed in to testify. That's Chad and Norma Heron.
Great. If you guys can let them through and then we'll, we'll let Jim and Josh close after we take some public testimony. And if you are, are joining us and you want to speak, just state your name and address for the record and hopefully we'll have you patched over onto this side soon.
Madam Chair, I cannot locate those, a couple in our attendees. So if they are in, if they can do the raise hand, I don't see anyone with that name here. I do see, well, I did see a raised hand, but then it went away.
If you could raise your hand and leave it up there.
Got someone coming in now, Madam Chair.
All right. Are you with us? Looks like they've papped somebody over, but if you can hear us and wanted to state your name and address to the record, make sure you're not on mute.
Okay, unmute. All right, how about now?
We can hear you.
Okay, great. My name is Chad Heron and we live at 1767 West Greenhead Drive, which basically we have one outlet onto Linder. I don't know if the complex is going to have an outlet that faces the east. But we have essentially four streets converging within a space of 150 feet. Plus the gas station as, as well. So our concern is the amount of traffic flow that's going to be coming into a very confined space. There's no outlet other than the Greenhead Drive for this whole part of the neighborhood. Whitestone Estates has only one entrance and one exit. Now, during the, the school session, that road is very hard to access as it is now. And I know that Mallard Landing also has that problem. So I'm not certain what can be done, but I'd like it to be addressed because people come into Whitestone Estates looking for heaven knows what, but they, they do a lot of turning around in here in the middle of the road. And then they, they just head out back onto Linder and either go north or south. But we are concerned about all these roads converging in a small area. And then if there's an emergency vehicle that needs in here or we need to get to work, we are in sort of a congested situation.
Thank you, Chad. I appreciate you, you being here and voicing your concerns.
Thank you.
Are there any questions for Chad? Thank you, Chad. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Um, Madam Clerk, is there anyone else that would like to testify or anybody else want to raise their hand in the participant room?
Madam Chair, at this time, I don't see any raised hands.
Okay, we'll do the awkward jeopardy pause here for another minute, just to make sure that everybody's had a chance to speak if they'd like. And you can hit star nine to unmute yourself or you can raise your hand on the Zoom panel. Seeing none, I think we'll open it back up to the applicant if they'd like to close and address the questions of Chad and Norma for us.
So I, I'll jump on that. Let me, let me turn my camera back on, I guess, here.
Welcome back, Josh.
Yeah. So if I heard correctly, there, there's some concern with the folks traveling on Greenhead, which is just to the south and that, that, that road goes, goes east-west there. And, and there's the, the thought is that we could somehow control traffic through. I, I guess I failed to see what, what we could what the concern was that, that we could solve there with, with with what he was, was asking. Did I, did I miss something there? And, and not to say that we wouldn't attempt to, I just, I just don't see what what we could do with with our proposal that would, that would change the, the, the traffic flow. Is his concern that we do have an access?
Josh, I think the concern is that you're connecting the, the 12 Oaks West and East and giving an access off of Linder. And I know that they've also got an access off of Franklin there. But their concern is having that access on Linder adds some congestion to Linder and some of those other neighborhoods that exit off of there in close proximity. So I don't know if you've got any comments that you want to pass on from what ACHD has told you or about how you think traffic flow could work within the site, but I think that's what they were asking for.
Yeah, no, I don't, I don't have a lot of, I guess I don't have a lot of comment on, on how we could improve that. You know, we, we definitely want the access to, to Linder. That helps with, you know, traffic flow in and out of the subdivision. Now, you know, anybody knows that when, when there is construction or when, when residences are built, traffic flow does, does increase, you know, not, not to the extent in this case that it was a concern of, of, of the highway district. Linder isn't our key road and that's, that's, you know, we, we definitely bank on that, that one connection there will help residents in 12 Oaks get, get in and out of the subdivision easier, especially if they're trying to go south. Or, or, or north for that matter. And so that's, it's, it's beneficial for us. Now, I, I'm sympathetic that, that folks get lost and get, get turned around when they're, when they're trying to go somewhere where they're not familiar with and end up turning, turning in where they don't want to be and have to turn around. You know, that does increase traffic in that, in that, in that neighborhood. But, but I don't, I don't know what the impact is from folks who are living in, in the, you know, this, this, this project. And on the off occasion, somebody does make a wrong turn and they meant to go somewhere else or to our project or, or something that they, they will turn around. But I don't, I don't, without knowing, you know, that specific concern is from that residence, how often that happens. It, it's probably in my mind, pretty minimal in terms of, you know, people actually have to turn around, but, but that is a, you know, it is a concern of the neighbor and then, and we can, we can, you know, do whatever we can to, to help folks know where they're going. We're going to have addressing and signage out there along Linder so that folks can see that before they, before they get there and hopefully won't have to turn around. We'll, we'll just should be, should be a pretty easy left-hand turn in when you're coming south and you'll see it. But again, it is you have just turned, so you won't be up to speed quite yet anyway. So I think that, that should be a should be a, an, an easy concern to digress, to, to address, I should say.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Jim.
So I'd like to offer a few other comments is during the design stage of this, you know, we looked at not having an access, access on the Linder Road and just using our cross-access easement with Hark's Corner, the commercial area with our existing access on Franklin Road and our additional cross-access to the 12 Oaks commercial area in the middle, which gives us three. So we have three access points now. And after meeting with staff, fire, police, it was determined that the best solution was to make an alignment with the existing street across to the east of us on Linder. Because with ACH's improvement of Linder, they will restrict our access to a right-in, right-out only. And so it is going to drive a little bit more traffic to Franklin that wants to go a certain different direction because we do have an uncontrolled access on Franklin, left-in and right-in, left-in, right-out. So we, we did to a lot of. So we, we did to a lot of consideration and it was just decided this was the best because in the end it was going to be a right-in, right-out only. So it really is going to have minimal impact on our neighbors. With the widening of Linder Road in four lanes, obviously the traffic's going to flow smoother. It, it's going to go all the way across the freeway. I mean, I, I drive down that road every day to my subdivision and so I do recognize school traffic. Haven't had it for a while, but it, it, it is a factor. It does slow down. So we always are concerned about how we affect our neighbors and because of our additional access points and the fact that is, is only a right-in, will only be a right-in, right-out at some point in the future, I think our, our impact will be minimal. Also, I would ask Sonia, do you have an aerial? Because I'll point out exactly where that dumpster is if everybody wants to know. It is directly north of one of our buildings. And that dumpster does have a tendency to be a little bit unsightly in times. I have to admit, my office used to be right across from it in that complex. I've addressed that with the current property owner there and they are working to make some changes to that dumpster to make it more suitable. We have a dumpster in our commercial area as well as unused right now. And so we might be some sharing with some of them to allow some alleviation of some of that impact on that dumpster. Would have less of an impact on this future apartment. But if there is an aerial, I could show you exactly where that dumpster is.
Looks like they're trying to load one for you. And are there any other questions from the commission for the applicant while we're waiting for them to load that up for us?
Yeah, I see the aerial now. So if you look at so if you see where it says cornerstone auto repair, just the word cornerstone directly above that to the north, you see a building. The dumpster is directly to the east of it, right on the other side of the, the concrete fence.
I think they're trying to zoom in and move it up for you.
Jim, you should see a pop-up asking you to control the screen. Do you see that?
Tap here to control the screen. Okay, so now I can move it?
You are correct.
Is there someone? There's delay.
There you go.
So so here it says Firehouse Club and Grill. Directly to the east of it is where the dumpster exists. Our access point is several stalls down from it, but there is a building directly south of that dumpster. You can see the dumpster now pretty clearly. Thanks for whoever's running the mouse. I can't. So you see there's a tree and then the dumpster is directly to the west of the tree between the, that building and that, that tree there. That's it.
Right. It looks like there's some further to the, to the east as well. Those, the, the ones to the east were my main concern and then knowing that there's that one by the firehouse is also.
The ones to the east, I haven't really paid attention to those, to be honest with you. They've never been an issue to anybody. I know those have had a tendency to get overfilled and kind of be unsightly and a little messy. Because there's a couple of restaurants in there and there's only Arctic Circle on this other one.
Okay, it was just a concern. I mean, as far as how those line up, if you're, you know, trying to you know, play out in that little bit of open area or something, or you have your windows open in the morning and, you know, that smell wafting in, that could be rather unpleasant.
But you do also have a donut manufacturer there, so.
That is true, and that you should see the line in front of them some mornings going to get those donuts. There's a drive-through right there.
All right, Jim or Josh, you guys have any other closing comments you'd like to make?
I don't, unless there's any questions.
Yeah, I don't have anything else to add.
Okay, any other questions from the commission? Seeing none, I would certainly entertain a motion to close the public hearing so we can move to deliberation unless there's other questions you'd like to ask.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Seal.
I move we close the public discussion for twelve Oaks East, H 2020 0014.
Okay, second. I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Hi.
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 All right, thanks, Josh and Jim. We will deliberate and I think you might be moved to the attendee side, but thanks for being with us and spending a good amount of your evening with us. We appreciate it. Commissioners, the floor is yours for deliberation. Anyone want to go first?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Grove.
I think it makes sense with connecting what is already being built over there. Driven by that going to the transfer station a few times. Looks good and it makes sense in terms of putting apartments that are close to, to major roadways with Franklin and Linder, especially knowing that Linder, the intersection's going to be widened and also eventually have connectivity to South Meridian with an overpass at some point in the future. And also just its proximity, this proximity to the 10-mile interchange and the the growing 10-mile district that's taking place makes, makes a lot of sense and especially if we can get the, that walking path to help connect you know, that one-mile block, if you will. So I, I don't see any major concerns with, with this. It, it makes sense to me.
All right, my comments, since not everybody was jumping up and down to make comments yet. I, I think it, you know, when I first saw it, I always get sad when somebody wants to take commercial and turn it into multifamily. But at the same time, where multifamily works best is as a transition between residential and a commercial use. And so I think it's a, it's a well-thought-out design. It incorporates well. I appreciate that they're all two-story units instead of three-story and kind of towering there. It looks like it'll tie in pretty nicely with the, the west concept there. I, I think having the access off of Linder be a right-in, right-out should hopefully help ease the public comment that we received about concerns on the Linder. It's certainly always hard when there's another development that ties in, but I think they're right. A lot of people will use Franklin for that full access instead of Linder, especially as Linder gets improved. The applicant had made a request to change one minor thing with the development agreement. I didn't see any big any big concerns with what they were requesting there, but I, I would agree with staff to use their language that they provided in whatever motion that we put forward. But we don't have to, we don't have to give any actual comments on that development agreement, but if anyone wants to make a comment, we certainly can. So it doesn't have to be included in ours. That's just a city council level thing. Commissioner Seal, any comments?
Madam Chair, yeah, I mean, the only thing I didn't see, it seems like there wasn't a lot of detail that was included in, in some of this. It's, it's kind of hard. A lot of times we'll get, you know, multiple elevations or presentations as far as what open space looks like. So, you know, noting the staff's comments that, you know, essentially the open space in the development to the west is going to accommodate all that. I'll kind of overlook it. I do like the fact that there's enclosed garages that are included with this. Hopefully they don't get, you know, people being people again, hopefully they don't get used as storage and then, you know, people are parking everywhere else, so. But I have no issues with it and I mean, it's kind of nice that it's going to tie into the business there. It, it is in the 10-mile corridor area where, you know, we're trying to get more of the, you know, the higher density developments to go in, you know, to kind of help get people closer to the, to the freeway and, and have that, have that traffic closer up there. The right-in, right-out off Linder Road should help with the traffic. I'm, I'm almost concerned about all the traffic going the other way simply because, you know, if, if you're going to go, if you want to go out to Meridian Road or even 10-mile and you're unfettered off of Franklin, that's probably the route that you're going to take. So hopefully that doesn't become a concern with the residents in there, but considering they're all going to be part of the same HOA standard, that'll probably help them eliminate some of their own problems in the future if they have them. But I have no issues with it.
And certainly if you had comments too about, I know the concrete wall was a, a big part of where that pathway is. I think they're going to be required to punch a walkway through there. But if we need to make a comment that they work to make sure that's aligned in an area that's not adjacent to a trash dumpster area, we certainly could.
Okay, yeah, and it's, and I mean, it's more just looking at, I mean, the aerials on it compared to, to where everything is on this. It's, you know, they're, they're kind of limited as to where where they can put this. I mean, they'd have to start moving buildings around to accommodate some of that. So hopefully they can just work with some of the vendors to you know, accommodate some of that, share some space, whatever that might look like. So I, I don't want to get too involved in trying to tell them where to put a dumpster, I guess, but it is a concern.
Other comments?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Pitzer?
Yes, my, I have no objection to this. I, I do understand the concerns of the neighboring subdivisions where they have three or four streets coming out onto Linder already and, and the traffic this is going to create, but I see that Linder is going to be, you know, once that gets widened and, and they have a turn restriction, I think a lot of their fears will be alleviated. I, I too was concerned that I couldn't see any amenities with this, but I think they explain that that's going to be part of the neighboring subdivision. So I have no objection to this. I think actually they did a very nice job in, in putting through access to the commercial and I think it transitions well.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner McCarver.
Yeah, I would, I'm in support of this for all the reasons all the other commissioners have elaborated on, so I won't restate them.
Thank you.
But I would be in support of this.
Commissioner Cass Nelly, if you have any comments or certainly anyone wants to make a motion?
The only, my only thought concern is that there will, I mean, there's, you know, they put the extra parking in, but that would be I'm, I'm in support of it other than it almost seems to me like you can never have almost too much parking, but they definitely meet and exceed the requirement. That's my only comment. It's not a killer for me.
I'm starting to think that Bill was a, he was a skateboarder in his past life. He like, he likes all that extra parking out there, all that, all that flat space.
Not that I love concrete. I just know how much it gets used.
All right, well, the floor is open if someone would like to attempt a motion here.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Seal.
After considering all staff applicant and public testimony, I move to recommend approval of the city council file number H 2020 0014. As presented in the staff report for the hearing date of June 4th, 2020 with the following modifications. For condition B12, the applicant shall be responsible to determine whether adequate capacity exists in the receiving sewer system, including two lift stations to accept the additional flow from this development. Upgrades are necessary. The applicant shall be responsible for all costs associated with said upgrades.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Hi.
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 All right.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll move on to the final item and then hopefully wrap up our evening here. So we'll start with staff report for Chucker Ridge, H dash 2020 dot zero zero two five.
Good morning or good morning, good evening, Commissioners, Alan Tiefenbach, planner with City of Meridian. Chris, can you load up the PowerPoint for me, please? Thank you. All right, so this is the Chucker Ridge preliminary plaque. You can look at this. The property is located at the southeast corner of McMillan and McDermott Road. You may remember a couple of years ago, Commissioners, you approved of this prior, well, you recommended approval on an annexation of 108 acres, which included the Oahu High School. That is just directly south of where you see the subject property. The subject property is Zoned Residential Eight. Chris, would you please move on to the next screen? So this is a request for a preliminary plaque consisting of 63 buildable lots and eight common lots. Again, like I said, this property was annexed and zoned in 2018 is what was known as part of the Oahu High School annexation. So this annexation, like I mentioned, included a little over 100 acres, which is a site of a future Oahu High School. And the particular piece that we're talking about is 15 acres, but this was part of this annexation. There was a development agreement that also applied to this particular project. The school district was required to build several roads, which I'll talk about in a minute, and that was required as part of the development agreement. One, two of these roads, one of them was a north-south road and the other was an east-west road. And again, I'll give you an example here in a minute. But these were, these were intended to be the primary access for this development and these collectors will feed traffic out to McMillan Road. And the property is about 15 acres, mostly flat. There is a canal. If you look right to the north, running east and west there, you can see the, the McFadden Drain. And that runs a, a, across the entirety of the property at the northern border. This property also includes a, a three, roughly three and a half acre piece of property to the east. That is what is shown there as phase two. That is that large parcel over to the east there. This particular property is being set aside for future construction of State Highway 16. The lots is proposed are at least 4,000 square feet in area, which that meets the requirements of our A. Chris, would you move to the next screen, please? So this was a, this is an exhibit that the applicant prepared for us to sort of demonstrate the way that the access would occur. The primary access to this development would be from a north-south collector. That's what you see there in the orange. And that collector is being required to be built as Duahe High School annexation. It's presently under construction. So the southern part of that collector down to Eustick is being built by the high school or by the school district. They are also building the orange east and west that you see there, as well as the red that you're seeing going north and south right to the property. The northern part of that orange collector will be built by the Gander Creek subdivision. They finished their final plaque. We're, they're getting ready to pull building permits, so they would be starting construction very soon. So the applicant proposes also to use an access easement for a second access. So, so this this project is more than 30 lots and as you probably know, any project that has more than 30 homes has to have a secondary point of access. That's what you see there in red. That is actually the McFadden Drain. There is an easement that runs across that drain. The applicant is proposing, and I'll show you, you'll be able to see that in a minute from the landscape plan. The applicant is proposing to use that drain as their access. It, it's important to note that ACHD, they have not provided any final comments on this project. They mentioned that their meeting is not until June 10th. And the planning commissioner is going to have to decide if they're okay with moving forward on this development without formal comments. I will mention that I did contact the planner with ACHD today just to see sort of if they could give me any preliminary feedback on this plaque. And, and her response was that, that she did not notice any major issues. There wasn't any deal killers. There, there may or may not be some little tweaks that could probably be fixed before city council, but again, she didn't see any showstoppers. Can you move on to the next screen, Chris? So this is a, a sort of a better example of the way that the interior access is going to work. So all of what you see there in orange is what the applicant is building. You can see the green over there to the west. That is the road that is eventually going to be built by the Gander Creek subdivision development. And what you see in red there is the McFadden Drain. Originally, the applicant proposed, so this would be the secondary access. Again, that's required for more than 30 houses. The, the applicant originally proposed to take a gravel access road up to that drain and then to go eastbound out to McDermott Road for their secondary access. The issue with that is that obviously this is eventually going to be State Highway 16 when they build that and access to the east is going to be cut off. Knowing that the applicant is now proposing a westbound access and that westbound access would come along McFadden Drain. It would connect into that future right-of-way being built by the Gander Creek subdivision and then they would either go south or they would go north. The fire, just the fire has looked at this and they're okay with it. They, they haven't expressed any issues with this. We are adding a condition of, we are recommending a, a condition of approval on this that no more than 30 houses that no more than thirty houses can be built without a permanent secondary access. I've talked to the applicant about that, and the applicant has not expressed any concerns with that. I think they're amenable to that. Next one, please. So this is the landscape plan. This landscape plan proposes a central open space area with about a little more than ten percent of usable open space. This was quite a discussion point between staff and the applicant. There was a few other iterations of this that we didn't think were particularly usable until we arrived at this. So first, as I mentioned, this sets aside almost three and a half acres to the east. That's that large blank piece that you see there. That particular piece of property is set aside for expansion of the State Highway sixteen. And you'll look that there is a buffer that's being provided. They're required under the Uniform Development Code. They're required to provide a thirty-five foot buffer against any entryway, which is what Highway sixteen would be. In addition, they're also, they're also going to be putting in a berm there. That's one of our conditions of approval. A berm or a fence or a berm or a combination of a berm and fence is one of the requirements of our UDC. In the center there, you can see what they're doing, sort of like a central area. And this central area is what's going to be comprising sort of a pathway loop. If you move on to the next slide, please, Chris? I think this sort of demonstrates the way that their, their their open space is going to work. So what they're doing, if you look at what's blue over there all the way onto the east, the blue is asphalt, and that's going to connect into their sidewalks. So the sidewalks are what you see there in green. The blue would be a concrete pad, path with landscaping on either side of it that would run up that buffer for Highway sixteen. A part of that blue line you see there would connect across the driveway back to the other, to the other sidewalk. And what you see there in orange would connect up to the McFadden drain. The purple there, they can't do a lot of improvements with that because the the irrigation district won't let them do much more than gravel and maybe some vegetation. We're still waiting to hear on that. But they will bring it back through what's known as Lot twenty-five. That's that lot up at the north. You can see the pink line there running north and south. At staff's recommendation, the applicant is going to put a ten-foot landscape buffer on either side with a five-foot concrete path, as well as an accessway for fire access. That purple line will come down until it hits that orange line that you see there in the middle. That will also be a paved path. This will create a loop that's roughly about a quarter of a mile. So if you were to go around this, this loop, that would be about, yeah, give or take about a quarter of a mile. As this conceptual pathway plan resulted in discussions, it came about over time with staff and the applicant. But we don't have a final landscape plan that actually shows how this is going to be put together. Staff and the applicant have already talked about this, and they are willing to have this exhibit together before it goes to city council. So staff has recommended this as a condition. Staff has also recommended that this revised landscape plan show where the seating areas and some of the more passive recreational areas would be so that we can make sure that we actually have some qualified amenities there for our seating and for recreating. So at that, I guess that would, that would conclude my presentation unless you had any questions, Commissioners.
Thank you for the overview. I have one question, and it's related to the ACHD report. I know we, they're having their hearing on June 10th, but I believe staff has already talked with ACHD about what they expect out of that hearing. Could you talk to that for a couple of minutes, sir?
Yes, ma'am. Again, the only thing that they've given us sort of so far is that they do not think that they're going to have any major issues with this. I talked to the planner today on email a little bit, and she said that if anything, that anything that she's going to be recommended would be pretty minor. And she thinks that there's not going to be anything, it's not going to be a big enough deal that it can't be something small that can be fixed before it goes to the city council. But that's about as much as I know at this point, Commissioner.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? Hearing none. I think we'll open it up for the applicant to come and speak with us. Thanks, Alan. And as you're joining us, I think they just moved you over. Make sure you're not on mute, and if you can state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon, or good evening. This is Matt Adams. I'm at 462 East Shore Drive, Eagle, Idaho. Thanks for having me today. Everybody hear me? Loud and clear?
We can hear you. Thank you.
Excellent. All right. Well, first time I've worked with Alan, and we had a good process, so thank you, Alan, for that. I'm really excited about this project. I've been able to work on the Oahu High School and several projects around this area, and I got to become a pretty good acquaintance with Bob and Judy Sprigle, who owned this property. And it was kind of a dream come true for them to be able to sell it for a development and retire. So we're celebrating Bob and Judy's retirement tonight, not just a new housing development. The size of these lots and the size of the homes fill a niche market for affordability that Meridian is in terribly needs right now. Not everybody can buy a half a million dollar house. And so having homes in the low two hundreds and the two hundreds is very desirable for the city. Couple quick things I want to cover. I do want to clarify the ACHD issue really briefly. We've got, we received an email from Paige Inkhead, who's a planner too at ACHD. And she stated that the Chucker Ridge sub will need to be a commission action item due to the modification of the master street map collector since it will not be connecting to McDermott because of the ITD right-of-way and future Highway sixteen. So the matter that is before ACHD is the fact that the state's building an expressway, and their mid-mont collector will no longer go through to McDermott. ACHD did a staff report and reviewed this project during the annexation process. So the, the hearing, my understanding, is not applicable to the actual pre-plat that is in front of you. I want to reinforce some of the things that Alan talked about. Is it possible for me to share my screen?
Madam Chair, Matt, give me one moment. We'll give you that access.
Thanks, Chris.
So I'm going to show a rendered landscape plan that we put together so that you can get a sense of how much open space we have on this project.
You should be able to do that now.
And Matt, if you would just make sure that the quirk's office and the planning office has a copy of whatever you're showing, for the record, that'd be great.
Absolutely. Thank you. I did email this to Alan earlier today, and I'll work with Alan to make sure that happens.
Great, thank you.
So you should see on your screen now.
Matt, sorry to interrupt. Did get that. I apologize. I didn't remember getting that. I got a PDF earlier from you. I'm sorry, I completely forgot, but you've got it now.
Not a problem. So if you can all see that, it's just a rendered plan, a standard kind of marketing board. And it kind of enhances or shows in a little more detail the open space. We're excited that we have, we're able with the, this layout to do a central open space that's kind of equidistant for all people. We've also got that really wide and heavily planted buffer on the east edge along the ITD right-of-way. And as you can see in this exhibit, we actually show where the roadway is set to occur. So we have a large planted buffer, and then there is a pretty good distance before you get to the road. We're also, I know that the code does not allow the McFadden drain in its condition to be considered qualified open space. But I think we all understand the quality of a space like that for, you know, just to see the baby ducks in May or to be able to take a walk. And not to have anybody living directly behind you is awfully nice. The house behind mine is twelve point five feet from the fence. So this is a great, great attribute to the community. And we still meet the open space requirement, even though we do not count the McFadden. A last point on open space. We have a high school next door to us with an open campus. It's not fenced. That large eight-acre field that'll be directed to the southwest. And then we're going to have a, an elementary school to the west of us. And West data always keeps those open, and they have play equipment and soccer fields, et cetera, et cetera. So we've got a great product here. We've worked back and forth to make sure that we have access. And we are really excited about this. This project. I want to very briefly, and then I'll be done. I'm going to stop sharing, because we don't need that. There's some specific conditions in the staff report. I want to make sure everybody understands we are agreeable to. Condition, these are the planning conditions. One B, we agree to provide the permanent secondary access to the north or to the south prior to constructing more than thirty homes. So our plan is to get started. We would stop at thirty if we couldn't get the secondary, but our plan is to negotiate the secondary access this year with how fast things are moving to the north and the south of us. Condition one C, we agree planning would like us to add a ten-foot landscape buffer on the west edge so that when the future street is built on the school property, we don't have homes with our street both on the front and the back fence. Front yard, backyard. So we're going to add a ten-foot wide landscape buffer on that west edge. That's not a problem at all. Increases our open space numbers. And then condition two A, we agree to make sure we have the berm built up on that east edge to help for separation from the highway. And then condition two E talks about landscaping the McFadden drain easement. We have no problem with this. The one reason I bring it up is we generally, NAMPA Meridian Irrigation District does not allow any kind of landscape irrigation within their easement. So they're kind of funny. They say you can plant lawn, but you can't irrigate it. Which is, obviously, we're not Portland. It would have lived two weeks ago for one week and been dead. So we're going to work through that with Alan. We do not want it to be a poorly maintained area, but city zoning ordinances and codes already require that we keep our weeds mown and that we have a nice space. So we're going to work through that specific item. So with that, I will just take any questions you may have. And then if we do have something specific that I can't answer, we do have Brady Lasher with the developer group available if he needs to answer a question as well. Excited to see you guys. I'm in front of P and Z for a while, and I got to stay home. And so it's even better than normal. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Any questions for Matt?
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Pittsir?
Yes. Hi, Matt. Thank you for being here tonight. Liked the presentation. Can you tell me what amenities are going to be in that open space, or is it just grass?
Yeah, that's a good point. So we have, we kind of have two open spaces, right? We have the central area, and then we have the area on the east edge. In, in both of those, we have nice open lawn space in case you do have littler kids that can't go over to the school, right, to kick a ball or play catch or throw a frisbee. But our main amenity package for this development is the pathway system. So we have all these different loops and pathway connections. And then at this, at the scale of these drawings, we could not show it, and we were still working with Alan on it. This, the owner plans or the developer plans to install seating benches and that type of feature along the pathway. So it'd be, it's a walking, strolling, jogging, and sitting amenity package.
Follow-up. So what's your, you said your price point on this is going to be in the two hundred thousands?
Yeah, this is, I mean, you know, this is a similar product to what we've seen, like at Eustick and Locust Grove and other parts of town. By keeping the units a little smaller, you're able to sell nice finishes, good product, but keep the price down. Now, we don't know the price the day these are built, but historically, this type of unit was in the low two hundreds.
Okay, which brings up my question with age group. I, how, and how big are the homes?
That I don't know.
With the square footage, we don't know. But if we're keeping to that price point, I'm thinking there's probably going to be a lot of young families. You have the elementary school coming in. But before they get elementary school age, there's no top lot or, or anything like that that you're, that you're planning. My understanding-
That's correct. Yeah. Our, we're focused on the pathway system and not a top lot system.
Okay, thank you.
Matt-
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thing we've, we've talked about quite a bit as a commission is it seems to be a more common design trend lately for these common, or these shared drives accessing four lots off of one shared drive that connects them with the public street. I always have a little bit of a concern with it just because, I mean, for personal reasons, I would never buy one that's on a, on a common drive like that, because I hate the access going in and out of it and trying to figure out how to turn around, or, you know, if you pull in forward and you got to back back out or whatever it is, it's just a little tougher to navigate. And trash enclosures can be a challenge, even though it's only once a week. People put their trash out in the morning. They don't take it back until night. When you've got four different houses putting out one or two trash cans, it can just get kind of congested and limit roadway access. So that's my, my biggest concern with that, but I don't know if you've got any comments related to that. It's just a, a comment I frequently have related to those shared drives. It's not my favorite thing to see those.
Yeah. Commission Chairman, Chairperson, that's a great comment, actually. So really quick, I'm texting with Brady, so I've got some more information for you. The homes will be fourteen hundred to two thousand square feet. So you can see how fourteen hundred square foot, we can really be effective with the price point. And just on that, not to take up too much time, but I have a son who's twenty-six. And he could never move back here and buy a home, which is, you know, hard for a dad to think about. But when you do have some opportunities like this, it makes it possible. On the shared driveway, so I agree with you. No matter what kind of vehicle you have, you're either sunk, or you might be able to make some of those turns, right? We actually, I was unable to get it prepared for today, but when we add the ten-foot landscape strip on our west edge, we are considering redesigning that corner to ease that and have a maximum of two lots if we have a shared driveway at all in that corner. So we are looking at changing that. On the northeast corner, we do have a shared drive to two lots. We'd like to keep that because it is also the, the public access to get into another point of access into the pathway system. I think it's a good comment, and the one in the center, it does have basically three lots, so it's kind of that tough spot that you talk about. We'll take a look at it. I know we have an opportunity to do some plat modification, because I need to get Alan's comments in. And we'll see if there's a way we can ease some of those spots. Thank you for that.
And then one other question I have for you, too. I know in the future use map, this area and the area to the south of it was kind of designed for mixed-use regional planning. You guys are already zoned R eight, so we're just considering your plat right now, but just wondering how what kind of transition fencing or whatnot you've got between your property line and the property to the south of you. Is there going to be fencing kind of buffer space there?
That's a good question. Thank you, Chairperson. So the, that south edge right now, as you know, when you go in with your construction documents, that's when you designate fencing. So right now, we have not, I have not had a detailed conversation with the developer on that specific thing. Now, generally, on the back of homes, we do a vinyl product, a six-foot high vinyl product. I will say that to the south, I've been in contact with that developer, and so it probably is appropriate to note that they plan on that, in that MU zone, they're going to be able to follow it a lot more closely. And they are planning single-family, some like duplex-style stuff, as well as some commercial. And it is a lot more of a mix like the MU is desiring. And they plan on putting a similar product to back up to these homes so that there is a good transition from Gander Creek to Chucker Ridge into that next parcel to the south. The long answer to your question, short answer is, right now, typically vinyl, six-foot. But we haven't had those detailed questions or discussions.
Thanks, Matt. Other questions for Matt?
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Grove?
Thank you for this. I am always happy when we can get a product in that comes in at that lower price point. That is- That is. Always a big concern of mine that we don't have enough homeownership options in that lower price point. So I appreciate that product. The, the concern that I have is I haven't seen a timeline for the elementary school that is mentioned. Is that something that you are aware of? And then I have a follow up question, I guess, with that.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Grove. Good question. So I do work with Joe Yocumore, West Ada, a lot and he and I've discussed this. This area is set up for an elementary school. He generally places cards pretty close on that. And two years ago, when we started working on the high school, he said that this elementary was ten years out. That's really hard to predict. I, I would not put stock that it's exactly eight years out now. It's very unpredictable. It's all based on growth and then the ability to pass a bond. But the, the actual word we've heard from the district is, would put it eight years out from now.
So my follow up to that is similar to Commissioner Pittsir. And that. With schools being somewhat of an unknown and being able to lock in. You know, this isn't a situation where, you know, we have Pleasant Valley going in. Not too far from here and we know that that was, is in, this is an unknown in terms of when. I don't, I see the, the, a lack of. Amenity for this population without. The selling point of having a schoolyard to go play in that you've mentioned for eight to ten years. That, that concerns me. Is that something that you would be willing to address? By adding in additional open space in that central area to accommodate. An addition of some sort of amenity for those families.
Yeah, Commissioner Grove, thank you. You know, when we were working out this plan, we, we had considered a tot lot. That is a pretty standard piece, very popular with the young families. And we, we had considered it in that central, largest central space. We started to get pretty excited about the pathway loops. But. If this commission thinks that's an integral piece for success of this project, I don't think we would not object to that. We can, we can work with that and honestly, we, the one thing we didn't do a good job of is showing you. You know, like Commissioner Pittsir asked too, what are the amenities? Cause you can't see them. So we didn't do a good job of showing you that. And I think yes, they would be open to a tot lot if needed. And I think we need to, when we get to council, we need to show. Do a better job showing what our amenity package is with the pathways, the seating areas and then potentially the top lot.
Thank you. I think you, if we could see more of that, that would be very helpful. I mean. Walking paths are great, but as a ten year old kid running around the neighborhood, a walking path is not the same as somewhere to play. So. Taking that into consideration would be helpful.
All right. Any other questions before we open up for a public testimony? Hearing none. Matt will be back with you here in a few minutes. Madam Clerk, do we have anybody sign in to testify on this one?
Madam Chair, we do not.
Okay. Anybody that's sitting in the attendee panel, if you would like to speak on this application and want to hit the raise hand button or hit star nine. We'd be happy to hear from you. And awkward pause, but it doesn't look like there's anybody making movement there. Going once, going twice, gone. Okay. Matt, we're back with you again. I don't know if you've got any additional comments you want to make to close.
Thank you, Chairperson Holland. Not really. I did, I got confirmation from the ownership group. They're, they're into the tot lot idea. If that's what we need to do to be successful. So I think that's great. This was a fun meeting. I think I always love meeting with the P and Z commission because it's a little more relaxed. And especially if you go last, because everybody's just shot and it is what it is at eight fifty four PM. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Matt, the other question. So on the shared drive, you mentioned that you might be reconfiguring the way that that kind of looks. For that northwest corner of the development. Is that something you feel comfortable if I, if we requested that there's no more than three homes off of a shared drive?
Yeah, Commissioner Holland, I think we could probably make that work. Yes, we would definitely do everything we can to make that work. And I think specifically in that corner, since we've already started looking at it and adjusting that. I, we would be comfortable with that. Absolutely. Thank you.
Any other questions for Matt before we close? The public comment period. Hearing none. Thanks, Matt. I would be open to taking a motion to close the public hearing.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Seal.
Move that we close the public hearing for Tucker Ridge, Tucker Ridge file H twenty twenty zero zero two five.
Second.
I have motion a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Aye.
None opposed. Thanks, Matt. Again, we appreciate you being here and commissioners, it's up for comment and if. Chris, if you wouldn't mind putting that plat backed up for us so we can look at it. I think the landscape one was nice to look at.
Madam Chair. Commissioner Castanelli.
Commissioner Castanelli, go ahead.
I guess that there's a silence, so I'll go ahead and start. I would have to agree with a couple of my fellow commissioners that. I, I think this is getting catered to a younger age group and the elementary school is a ways off and. And it's, it's all based on, on growth and development. It could be eight years. It could be ten, twelve years. We don't know. So I would like to see that, but I would, I, I would not want to see. I live in, living in a neighborhood with pathways. I think it's a phenomenal amenity to be able to kind of meander throughout here instead of just walking on sidewalks. I really enjoy that. So I'd rather see them lose maybe the seating areas. Cause I don't, you know, I don't just sit around my neighborhood. Take advantage of the, you know, my kids were younger, the tot lots and, and the pathways. Cause they kind of keep, kids can ride their bikes on the pathways or skateboard or whatever. So. Be, I'd kind of echo the comments earlier. And then the only, only other thought I had here was previously when we looked at a, I don't, I don't remember which one it was, but subdivision. South was. We went back and forth, I remember over height requirement, I think of the. The berm and the fence fronting highway six, the future highway sixteen. And I would just kind of ask. Staff. If, if, if we could meet the same height requirements. Again, I don't remember which, which subdivision that was, but if that's uniform to where we get, I think we went over the minimums. If I, if, if memory serves. If they could just look at that and make sure that that's uniform along highway sixteen.
Um, Alan or Bill, could you, or Alan or Bill Parsons, could you help clarify Bill? Castanelli's question there about the area between the buffer and the future roadway? And I can restate.
I'll probably let you weigh in on this one. I think he's asking about. Can we be consistent with the buffer and the, and the birmingham and the fencing to tie into the one to the south? I'm not sure which one that is, Bill. Any idea?
And I remember which one, I don't remember exactly which project it was, but I remember when we had a project that was looking at going off of either. Chenden or off of this, we had asked for additional buffer requirements or height requirements to give a better shield to the neighborhood. I think that's what Commissioner Castanelli is talking about.
Correct. That, that project is.
That's correct.
Yep, that, and that project was Gander Creek South. And I can look at, I, I can look at the condition of approval for the pre plat and see what you guys had recommended. I believe you wanted. A taller berm than what code required. But let me get that information for you and then try and back in.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you, Bill.
Yeah, I would, I would echo Commissioner Castanelli's concern there. I. Living next to a freeway and if you're going to have a house backing up to it and the nice pathways there, it'd be nice to have a little taller berm than maybe what UDC standards requires. Just to help with some of the sound mitigation of traffic there. I would also agree. I, I think I'd like to see a path or not a pathway. I think I'd like to see a tot lot or another amenity added to the package. I love the walkways too. It's one of the biggest reasons I chose the neighborhood I live in is because I love the pathways that go through it. So I think that, you know, it's, it's not undersold on me. That's a great amenity to this, but I think just adding a tot lot would, would make it that much better. Uh, any other commissioner comments?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Seal.
I, I kind of get the feeling that this isn't quite ready. So that, I may be the outlier here, but I mean, we're. I, I get concerned when I don't see reports from, from ACHD. I mean preliminary conversations, nothing on file says we may not have any problems, but we might. So I just, I hate to move forward without something in concrete from them, no matter where it's at. So. The open space, I mean, to design this without any kind of amenities. I mean, that seems to be more of an oversight than anything. So. You know, hopefully something can be done about that. But again, it just gives me the feeling that it's not quite ready. You know, the secondary access not coming through, you know, the ability to only do thirty lots, just some things like that. I just, I. I don't know that this is ready for prime time at this point in time. So. You know, with the, with schools coming in, that's great. And I think it's good that it has a walking path. But again, there's a school right next to it that has. Lots of, lots of space to do walking and running and all that stuff on. I mean, you know, living, living close to a school with a. You know, living in a subdivision with walking paths and living next to a school that has areas to do that is, is nice on, on both fronts. But where the grade school isn't going in to provide, you know, amenities for younger families, which the subdivision would attract seems to be something that. Should have been hot in the beginning. So and personally, I'd like, you know, outside of a tot lot, it'd be nice to see like, you know, we've seen some of the subdivisions do climbing boulders and. And different things like that. I do like that the, the open space is centrally located. It provides a little bit more. Little larger area for the kids to run around. It's a little more protected, you know, instead of, instead of putting it all on the end caps. So that part of it I do like. But again, to me, it just, you know, I mean, I'd almost think a continuance or something along those lines. Just so we can get all the information put in front of us. So we can provide, you know, better feedback for city council. So they don't have to. Wade through everything we're supposed to wade through before it gets to them. So. Just trying to function on what we're supposed to be doing here as a body. So it just seems like we don't have a lot of information to provide, you know, good. The amount of feedback to the city council that we should for this. That's just my thoughts on it.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Bill.
So I was able to pull up that. That project and it looks like the council approved a six foot tall berm with a six foot tall wall for a total overall height of twelve feet along the state highway.
Thank you, Bill. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
So. Commissioner Seal, to, to go back to your comments. So I think a few of the things we've talked about is enhancing that berm requirement. They, they are conditioned to only do up to thirty homes until they've got that secondary access fully committed. They mentioned that they would be willing to reduce the number of lots on the shared drive and they might be doing some reconfiguring on that northwest corner. And that they would be willing to do the tot lot if they had those four conditions and had a requirement to revise their. Their drawings before it went to city council or reviser preliminary plat. Staff, would that make you feel comfortable enough? Or do you think there's still other things that need to work out beside those things?
That's, that's a great question. So. Personally, I, I, when. Things come in at the last minute and I, to me, it just doesn't seem complete. I, I feel like we haven't had enough time to evaluate it and it's, you know, as fully as it needs to be evaluated. So. And we can try to predict the future as far as what may or may not happen, but you know, I'm, I'm more, I like to see. I like to see it in writing. I like to see what people are saying. I like to see how it's actually going to play out. So. You know, and again, it just has, to me, it has an unfinished feel to it. So. That's, that's just where I'm at. You know, I mean, I, I may be the outlier in that and that's okay. I just, I, I feel like it's. This is some, to me, it has a rushed feel. Like, like everything was kind of, you know, everything's being done at the last minute. I'm, that's, that's the feeling that I get. I guess if it was homework, that's the way I would feel. So it's just not quite all there. You know, and I mean, if it's, if it's missing detail because of something that's going on around it, that's one thing, but. This is missing detail because it's missing detail. It's missing, you know, components that should be presented by the time it gets to us.
And specifically Commissioner Seal, the, the components you would be looking for if you were to ask for continuance, just so we'd be clear.
Detail on the open space amenities, what they're going to provide, how they're going to provide it. You know, obviously there, we've talked about having them reduce the amount of homes off the shared drives. Having a detailed report from ACHD is the big one. And then, you know, the other things we've talked about as far as the berm and, and things like that. And the berm is something we brought up tonight. So I don't know that that one really falls in line with it, but it's, you know. Again, it just kind of goes into, it just has an unfinished feel to me.
Commissioner McCarville, do you have a comments? I don't think we've heard from you yet.
Yeah, I, I mean, I've got the same concerns there. Everybody else did there, especially with those mounted homes on the shared drive. I'm kind of a, I, I like the pathway system, but again, as with everybody else, I'd, I'd like to see what other amenities they had in store. So I'm not so sure that all this is an accomplishable before they get to city council. But. Yeah, sitting here as it is, it, it need, it definitely at the minimum needs conditions.
Yep. Well, and, and one note too, I believe per UDC code, they're only required to have one site amenity, which they do meet. With the, the pathway system and their bench system. But we certainly have it in our prerogative to make a condition that they would need to have a second site amenity because we don't feel the first one's adequate enough. So I, I'm not sure where we're at because it sounds like we've got at least one commissioner wanting to lean towards continuance. I'm not sure where the others are at on that. Choose to go that direction, we would have to reopen the public hearing. So just remind, remember of that before someone makes a continuance motion. Commissioner Grove.
I understand the concerns. I do think that we. I think we could condition this and still move it forward because. I think we're all kind of in agreement on. For the most part, in terms of like the shared drive limits. The addition of. An amenity to that. Most likely the central space. I personally would like to see, you know, something maybe a little more than a tot lot, just in terms of like. It's a little more substantial based on what I think the potential people moving in would need, but. I'm open to whatever that is. But. I agree with Commissioner Seal, the ACHD pieces is definitely a big one. But. I don't know. I think, I think we could condition this and still move it forward with the necessary conditions. I don't know exactly how to word all those, but I think that I would be in favor of moving in that direction.
And I think with the ACHD thing, we can just. Make a recommendation that it doesn't go to council until that final report's done and the final hearing is done. And that the applicant has indicated where the secondary access will come through on a revised plat before council comes in. I think that might be the way you condition it. I know I can't help you make the motion this time, but I can help you at least run, walk through. I know I can't help you make the motion this time, but I can help you at least run, walk through what, what we can consider there.
And, and Madam Chair, I, I mean.
Go ahead, Commissioner Seal.
I'll, I'll be kind of bluntly honest here, so if, if this was, and, and I mean, we've seen some presentations here in the, in in the past that kind of make us all go, wow, that's amazing. And, and for those, I'm willing to kind of do whatever it takes to help, you know, help foster those along, because they're good for our community overall. This one, I just have the sense that it's meeting the basic requirements. There's, there's nothing to this that makes me go, wow, this is a neat piece of property that's really gonna enhance our community, other than the fact that it has low price housing in it. So to me, it's, number one, it's lacking in, you know, substance, and it's late to the party, so. You know, again, I mean, if, if it showed me something that made me think, wow, this is something I really want to get behind and I want to try to help foster, then I, I would probably be on a different page with it, but again, it just, it doesn't have that, so.
Madam Chair.
Again, we can push it, we can push it through with, with everything that's in there, and it'll meet the minimum, but again, that's all it's gonna do. And, and I, I'm getting to the point where as much traffic and as crowd, as you know, as crowded as we're all starting to get, I would like to see things go above and beyond, instead of just meeting the basic requirements.
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Bill.
And I, I always appreciate the, the commission's discussion on these projects, because as you know, we are looking for premier. And we are looking for communities that, that have their own identity and have that the right open space, the right amenity package, but I just want to remind the commission tonight that this is simply a preliminary plat before you. It's not a rezone, it's not an annexation. So really, what's within your purview this evening is whether or not it's compliant with the comprehensive plan, which it is. And whether or not they meet the dimensional standards of the code and meet the minimum open space and side amenity requirements. In our staff report, staff has laid that foundation for you, that we believe they do, with some conditions. So right now, it, it's, it's not within your purview to change. If you want to limit the lots or to have them work with us to modify access off the common rise, that's, that's appropriate. But what we can't do is make them do more open space and more amenities than what code requires, because again, this is just a pre-plat. And the purview tonight is just to make sure it's consistent with the comp plan and consistent with code. And what we've indicated to you this evening is the project before you meets the minimums, and that's what we're, we're tasked to do this evening, so. I just wanted to, to bring the conversation back to what the purview is on this pre-plat. There is a development agreement on this site, the zoning's in place as part of that annexation. It was always envisioned for a single family detached development that you see before you. And that's why, what we have to deal with, so the applicant's complying with the development agreement, they're complying with the comprehensive plan. And again, they're, they're complying with the minimum code requirements. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill, appreciate your insights there.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Commissioner McCarville.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I would be comfortable moving it forward with conditions. I, I feel like the applicant was with us in the spirit of what we were in our discussions and questions during the presentation. So I would feel comfortable moving it forward with, with the conditions to happen before council.
Yeah. And I, I would agree, and you know, I, I think with Bill's comments in mind too, we can certainly ask them to consider an additional amenity, but they, because it's not an annexation, we don't have as much room as we do, and it's just a preliminary plat that we're looking at, so we have to be careful just to make sure that we're making comments related to how the plat fits in with the comprehensive plan. I don't know if anybody wants to try and take a stab at a motion on this one, it's a fun one.
Madam Chair. I just want, I, I, I just want to put in my two cents, I guess. They, the pathways, I, I think are, okay, it, it's an amenity, and, and I love the one that we have here, but I'm in a subdivision where everybody's sixty years old or more, and so that's what we like to do, but we're, we're putting in a subdivision that's has, as he says, is, is more price effective. They're eveless homes from the elevations that I've seen, I've seen. And it, it doesn't seem to come across in the presentation that we're getting, but if we're, if we're solely going on is this the best thing for Meridian, or is it just fitting in the comp plan? And that's all we're looking for is, is the bare minimum, then this meets the bare minimum, but I, I just, I'm I agree that it's premature, but I do think that we can condition for you know, condition for, for the approval.
Thanks, Commissioner Pitzer. Do we need to recap what we've talked about on what to include here? I think one of the, the recommendations we had was on the having a six foot tall berm and six foot tall fence for the boundary between future state highway sixteen and the subdivision. Asking the applicant to revise their plat to not have more than, or to work with staff to not have more than three lots off of a shared drive. We would ask them to consider putting in an additional amenity package for a tot lot or something similar. I don't think we can require it, but I think we can request them to consider it. And then the other thing would be to make sure that the ACHD staff report and recommendations were finalized with showing where that secondary access will come through before it goes to council. Those are the four things that I have on my list, but I don't know if anybody else has others. I will pause and see if anybody would like to attempt to make a motion, since I cannot do that.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Castanelli.
Commissioner Castanelli, go ahead.
I just, on the ACHD, is there anything that we can further put a condition in there to, to I mean, it's hard without, without going there yet and seeing their, their recommendation, their, you know, any conditions they have. And I, I agree with that point with, with Commissioner Seal. If there's something in there that causes all of us, or some of us, concern. I guess my question is, what, you know, what kind of a condition can we put in there on ACHD's conditions? Does anybody have a thought on that that would? Maybe that's part of what Commissioner Seal has a concern with, so that, that's my question, is how do we, how can we condition that, not just that we get their approval, but.
Bill, one question for you. Bill Parsons, one question for you, related to Commissioner Castanelli's question there. Is there the ability to condition that if something comes back from the ACHD report that would require substantial reconfiguration of this plat, that it would come back to the P and Z commission before it goes to city council again? Do we have that ability?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, I don't think you want to do that. If that's the case, then we just continue it out, wait for ACHD would be my recommendation. But what Alan alluded to is he reached out to ACHD. Anytime that there have changes to their master street map that has to go before their commission. So that's really the formality here, it has nothing to do with the internal street network. This, this project didn't even require a traffic study, so all of those collector roads that are being constructed with the high school are gonna be able to handle the capacity out of this subdivision. What's gonna be tricky is getting that secondary access because of the limited connectivity in the area. So my rec, what we've done in the staff report to try to give you some assurances, is we put a condition of approval that they comply with all ACHD conditions of approval. That's something we recommended as a planning department condition. Just to make sure if there are some revisions that we get those captured prior to city council. The applicant was made very aware at the beginning that we feel comfortable with the size of this project, that we could probably get past planning and zoning, but at no point are we gonna be heard at city council until we have ACHD's comments. And so they were aware of that, they were comfortable with that recommendation, and they were comfortable with the condition of approval that they comply with all of ACHD's conditions. So I think we have you covered, but again, it's certainly within your purview, we, I don't disagree with Commissioner Seal. I, with him, I want all the information for you. You're making a decision. That's been our, our goal from day one, is getting you all the information so you can make the best decision for our community. But in this particular case, again, I feel very comfortable with what ACHD is doing and, and moving this forward to city council with, and, and holding them up until we have their comments part of the city council hearing.
Thanks, Bill. With that, and I, I, I agree, you know, looking back at what ACHD is evaluating, it's really just that connection point to McDermott with the road, because it's gonna be eliminated at some point in the future, and I think that's really all they're evaluating there. Or the main thing they're evaluating, so it probably won't make a huge impact on the internal site development here. So I don't know if that changes anyone's perspective, but we've got an option for one of two motions, either a motion to move it forward or a motion to reopen the public hearing for continuance, so I'll leave it with you all on where you want to go with that, but I think I, I'd be in favor of trying to move it forward to council with some of the conditions we've talked about.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Grove.
All right, I'll take a shot at this.
Go ahead, sir.
All right, um, let's see. After considering all staff applicant and public testimony, I move to recommend approval to the city council a file number H 2020-0025 as presented in the staff report for the hearing date of June fourth, twenty twenty, with the following modifications. That the applicant construct a berm and fence both of six feet on the east side of the development. That the applicant work with staff to limit shared drive to a max of three houses. And that, we have a request to add an additional amenity to the site. Did I get everything? Because the ACHD part's already in the staff report, correct?
We have a motion, is there anyone that would like to second that motion?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, would you mind pulling pulling the commission on this one?
I sure can, Madam Chair. Commissioner Seal.
Aye.
Commissioner McCarville.
Yay.
Commissioner Pitzer. Commissioner Pitzer.
I think you're on mute, Commissioner Pitzer.
I couldn't get it off. I.
Commissioner Grove.
Aye.
Commissioner Castanelli.
A, a quick comment is that I share my fellow Commissioner Seal's concerns and, and everything. But with that said, it's an aye.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Holland.
I'll give an aye. Um, thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk, appreciate it. So the motion passes and it moves forward to city council with conditions. I know we'll need one more motion before we close, but there's also one more thing I need to ask of the commission. Looking at the calendar for moving forward, originally, we have a regularly scheduled hearing for the date of July second. And staff had reached out to us asking if, what our availability and quorum would look like. But at this point, it doesn't look like there's anything on the schedule for the July second meeting, and we've passed the noticing requirements at this point to include anything on that date, so there will be a special meeting on the ninth, but in order to do that, staff would just like to see us make a motion to cancel the July second meeting and plan for a special meeting on the ninth, if someone would be willing to make that motion.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we cancel the July fourth meeting and have a special session for July ninth.
Can you clarify that motion to say, cancel the July second meeting, not July fourth?
Sorry, July second meeting, that we canceled the July second meeting and have a special session meeting for July ninth.
Thank you, Commissioner Pitzer. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. I just need one more motion. What was that, Commissioner Castanelli?
I was, I, I was gonna say, most of the fireworks shows seem like they're getting canceled, we could probably go on the fourth.
We might be our own firework show.
Madam Chair, I move to adjourn.
Second.
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 All, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right, good night all, appreciate you.
Good night, everyone.
Night.
Good night.